Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. With that, the next item on the business and the agenda is the resolution. So if you give me just one second to get to the right part of my book here.
Okay, so the thumb grab will just plug into the USB port on the front where you would plug it.
Stuff going on in the background. Sounds like dog. Alright, so this resolution, I'm gonna read it for everyone. Cause we wanna recognize some folks here tonight. So first, this is a resolution recognizing the Johnston Development Corporation. For many years as sponsoring the Johnston Peach Blossom Festival. And recognizing festival volunteers and Deborah Aston as the festival chair. I should point out here as an aside that the festival is this Saturday. Whereas Edgefield County Council wishes to recognize those persons and organizations that are dedicated to providing services to the citizens of Edgefield County. And whereas the Johnston Development Corporation, a nonprofit organization, has been the sponsor of the annual Johnston Peach Blossom Festival since 2008, picking it up from the Johnston J.C.'s. And whereas Deborah Aston has been the chair of the festival and its leader and guiding force for more than two decades. And whereas the festival has grown and flourished under the Development Corporation, the festival committee and Ms. Aston's leadership. And whereas the Johnston Peach Blossom Festival continues to bring new visitors to our county while providing a wholesome and needed attraction for our citizens. Now therefore be it resolved by the Edgefield County Council in session duly assembled this third day of May 2022, that the Johnston Development Corporation and volunteers and Deborah Aston in particular be honored for their service to the citizens of Edgefield County adopted this third day of May 2022. Do I have a motion to approve that resolution?
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tower makes the motions, there a second. Ms. Ireland, second, see the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. And we would like to ask the Development Corporation, you can tell who they are by the way, they're all a team tonight, their shirts. If you would come up here so we can get a picture with all of you. So if everybody will join me down there, if all the council will come on down there, let's do a photo. Thank y'all. Okay, thank y'all for indulging us with that. Next council on the agenda is the approval of amendments. There are no amendments to approve at this time, so we'll move to guest speaker. Watson, Dorn, Charles Kemp are gonna talk about Natural Resource Conservation Service. I'll call them up to the front.
It's okay with y'all, I'll just go ahead and get started while she's working on the presentation. I am Watson Dorn, I'm a dairy farmer from Northern Inland County. My wife lives in that Hickory Hill Farm. People say, "Do you run Hickory Hill Milk?" And I said, "No, it runs me." So I appreciate the opportunity to speak with all of you and tell you a little bit about Natural Resources Conservation Service, commonly referred to as NRCS. This is a national service provided in all 50 states and most counties in all 50 states. What they do is provide funding for landowners. Let's say you have a track of timber that you just harvested and you need cow support to spray that timber and reforest that track of land. That's what Natural Resources Conservation does. It's a cow share, sometimes it's 50%, sometimes it's 100% cow share. Also, it's in my case, in livestock agriculture. It's for heavy use areas, manure management, things that involve the livestock industry. So Edgefield County has had this as long as I can remember. My father actually, my grandfather actually worked for what they called soil conservation back in those days. And my mother was actually a secretary down there two days a week for many years. So what I'd like to talk to you about is the funding from the county. Edgefield has received more funding than any other county in South Carolina. I think you've got some handouts there in front of you that show that Edgefield County, and this is 2019 data, received $3,504,198. That was allocated for 2019. I wish I had some more current figures, but that's state government first. The responsibility of the NRCS on the federal level is to provide conservation agents in that office. The responsibility for the county is to provide support staff, secretaries, whatever, to help support that person. This last slide I had it on the PowerPoint, but if you turn to this sheet, that shows what some of the surrounding counties were allocating versus what we're allocating. Unfortunately, Edgefield County is not allocating anything for the secretary for that office. And we're depending on one person to be there all the times. She's answering the phone, she's doing the clerical work, she's going out looking at the projects that are being implemented, approving the project, everything. So we need to help whoever this person is in Edgefield County. Currently, it's Myra Jones, nice young lady. She's responsible for getting Edgefield County this $3 million. If you look at some of the other counties and what they provide funding, Racine County for instance, they were allocated $424,000. But the county allocated for that office $154,000 to secretary and support staff. That's where I think we're falling behind. Personally, I didn't know that the county was responsible for this until recently. So I don't know if any of you even knew that. But we're falling behind supporting the people that are helping the landowners. And by the way, it's not the big landowners, it's the whole landowners. If you've got five acres of timber or five cows in the backyard, there's projects available for that. I'm gonna turn it over to Charles Kemp for a minute, and then if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, council members, I'm Brad Thompson. I'm a consulting forester, I manage timberland for private forest landowners. And I've worked the last 45 years in Edgefield County. And I'm here to support the NRCS and what it's meant to the county. I have a pamphlet that I can give you, but I printed out the practices that are available to private landowners in the county. There's 500 different practices in this pamphlet. I'm not gonna go over all the practices, but a lot of them pertain to water quality. And you know, we're blessed in Edgefield County with clean water. I know if y'all watched around the country and the issues they have with water, you know, in Florida where they have nutrient runoff and the rivers and water bodies are choked with algae and other plant growth. The water flowing in the river from Georgia to Florida is a constant dispute between the two states who has the rights to those waters. Well, here in Edgefield, we've got clean water, vibrant streams. If you wanna punch a well, you know it's gonna be, you'll be able to drink the water. And some of the practices that NRCS funds provide us with clean water. I'm just gonna go through a few of them quickly. You know, comprehensive nutrient management plan. Talking about nutrients, soil runoff, getting in the wells or our water bodies, grazing management, integrated pest management, fish and wildlife habitat management, feral swine management, agricultural chemical handling, waste storage facility, animal mortality facility, contour buffer strips, sediment basins, repairing forest buffers, filter strips, stream habitat improvement management, irrigation water management, stormwater runoff, stream crossings, nutrient management, and there's many more. And you know, once again, I say, you know, our clean water is nothing to take for granted. Turkey Creek and Little Stevens Creek are deemed by the Nature Conservancy as one of the most biologically diverse ecosystems in the United States. And it's not just in South Carolina, it's in the United States. Another big part of, they fund tree planting and site preparation. The county produces $26 million a year in timber revenue for the landowners in this county. And these cost share programs they have, they fund 50 to 100% of the cost, which is pretty awesome. So you know, small investment by the county in staffing somebody part-time over there in the office would have tremendous benefit to the county and, you know, exponential for a small investment. But I appreciate you having taken the time to hear me out. Thank you.
Hey, I'm Charles Kemp, a resident of Edgefield, and I wanna thank you for listening to us tonight. Something interesting Brad said was Turkey Creek, Stevens Creek, those are actually considered critical habitats for the Carolina Hill Splitter. And what is really interesting, you consider, they consider Beaver Dam Creek critical habitat, which flows right through, just right through the center of town right here. So Edgefield is full of critical habitat. And you know, we're talking about the NRCS and what it does, all those programs, but it has gotten fairly cumbersome that the NRCS is having a hard time meeting with landowners and continuing its position and getting more funding here, meeting with landowners, helping landowners. And of course, we're bringing in, you know, the NRCS bringing in $3 million. I would like for you to know that it's been estimated, I don't have documentation to back it up, but it's been estimated by a reliable source that 85% of that $3 million is staying here in Edgefield. And a lot of it goes to that rock quarry out there to get rock to put on roads. A lot of it goes to certain contractors in the area that do that kinda work. So a lot of this money comes to Edgefield. I would like to say in 2006, there was a certain crunch on the NRCS and they did an economic impact study and studied how much money comes in, came in 2006 to the county from the NRCS and said, hey, you know, the county needs to invest in this program. And so the county in 2006, my understanding, I don't have documentation here, but I understand that the county was given $10,000 a year. And then maybe around 2008, that stopped. I haven't seen it in writing, but that's kinda what I'm being told. It can be researched if necessary. As Brad said, the freshwater mussels, Edgefield holds more freshwater mussels than any other county in the state. It is in the top 10 of the timber producing counties in the state. And Edgefield County has a very low number of southern pine beetles because of the work that landowners are doing through assistance of the NRCS to keep pine beetles from damaging our timber. And one thing, one reason, and I've been around to other NRCS offices and asked other successful offices, why are you successful at getting federal dollars to your county? And what I'm, the number one reason is because our landowners are participating and our landowners are telling other landowners how to go about the process to get assistance. So what we're having here is we're having plenty of people wanting assistance, but lately, you can't get anybody on the phone or maybe to the door down there because it's locked and the guy's in the back. And I don't know why, but it's, for some reason, counties, the surrounding counties around us have gotten some soil conservationists and a tech and they've asked for it, and we've asked for it too in Edgefield County. But for some reason, we have not gotten that position filled. So we are kind of in a crunch right now. So with that said, I'd like to turn this over to Tyler Brown, who is the Soil and Water Conservation District Program Manager for the Soil and Water Conservation Districts in South Carolina.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the county council. It's an honor to be here, back home in Edgefield County. I resided here for about 10 years when I worked for the National Wild Turkey Federation. So it's an honor to come home to you all tonight. Charles has passed out a couple of items. One is the Edgefield Conservation District's Annual Report as well as a census of agriculture in Edgefield County. Just wanted to pass that out to you all so you can see the accomplishments of your Soil and Water District as well as the economic impact that agriculture has and conservation has to Edgefield County as well. A little bit about myself, I serve all the Soil and Water Districts in the state. There are 46 and they conform to county boundaries. I like to think of conservation in South Carolina as a three-legged bar stool. The first leg is the federal side, which is the Natural Resource Conservation Service. That provides critical funding for our farmers, landowners and timberland owners to implement conservation programs on the ground as well as the state side. That's me with the South Carolina Department of Natural Resources, serving as a liaison between state agencies, federal agencies, as well as counties as yourself, and the local Soil and Water District as well. That helps to serve those constituents as you heard from Mr. Kemp, Mr. Dorn, as well as Mr. Thompson, where the rubber truly meets the road in implementing conservation and providing an impact across the state. So I'm here tonight just to voice my support for the Soil and Water District and any funding and assistance that you all can provide them. I can assure you, outside of just a economic impact locally, the impact that can also be driven from an outreach and educational component, from your kids in the schools as well as your adults. As Mr. Kemp was referring to, that word of mouth and explaining the opportunities that can be out there. The more that we can expand on this in terms of support for your Soil and Water Conservation District, that's more money that's gonna go into the backyard of your constituents long-term and at the end of the day. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have related to Soil and Water Districts or I'll try to help assist any questions on the NRCS side as well, if you have any.
Looking over this, the articles, the papers that you guys pass out. So how much, I guess, I'm asking, how much funds do the federal, on the federal side, fund to you guys?
How many dollars on average? So Edgefield is the, is on average either number one or number two in the state in terms of federal dollars received, and that can average anywhere between 3 to 4 million a year. And we're seeing that number go up every year. So workload is high in this county. They are, Edgefield on average is the highest workload county, if not the second highest on average. But anywhere right now, what we're seeing year to year is 3 to 4 million, depending on what's available through the federal farm bill. But we're starting to see that number tick up higher and higher every year.
Okay, and that's right again now, that three something million. So what do you want the county to provide? How much?
Ultimately, it would be, right now the county is providing approximately $1,000. I think it would be great if the county could look at appropriating approximately $50,000 to the Soil and Water District to assist in funding a full-time person. Cause where the bottleneck and the cinch point is right now for Edgefield, they're lacking NRCS staff, they're between staffing to help man that front desk, to serve landowners coming into Edgefield. The money they have goes towards a part-time person that's not available to man that desk every single day right now. So they're pulling not only county funds, but they're also pulling state allocations, which we only allocate $15,000 a year to the Soil and Water District. So it's very limited in terms of time of what someone can sit at that front desk on. So by appropriating $50,000, they should be able to have someone there in that front office manning that desk on a day-to-day basis.
So did you all, did you guys ever have someone in the front, you know, at the desk?
Yes, previously it was until budgets started getting reduced. And then at that point there, the choice was either reduce hours or reduce the, or just eliminate the position. Well, eliminating the position wasn't the answer. So hours are just greatly reduced. So when landowners come by, it's just very limited when they can. And these farmers can tell you, they're full-time. Their schedules in terms of when they're alleviated to come into the office, to get paid or to sign up for practices or to help sign up for funding, it's never consistent, their schedules are never the same day-to-day. And so having someone there who's available from an eight to five perspective would extremely help out in that regard.
So let me ask you a couple of questions too, and you know, I apologize, this is, it's not meant to be too pointed, but I just wanna understand. So the, you gave us a list of eight counties. I know those eight counties, we've, Edgefield County allocated a little more than 3.5 million. Rest of the county is around 400, 500, 700, so way below us, as you had pointed out. So I guess, I don't see the correlations, I need some help here. You got 3.5 million allocated and we can't find 50,000 for a position. You see my problem?
Well.
So there's gonna, there's these two buckets of money difference?
Well, yes, because that three and a half million goes directly to landowners. That does not necessarily provide time for somebody to man that office at the end of the day. That is directly cost share dollars that goes to landowners and then eventually, ultimately to contractors who's helping to assist to deliver on that work. So no, there is no time that's allocated in that portion. That's all federal dollars that is for direct cost share to landowners, not to personnel time, if that makes sense. I wish it could, cause that would make this equation a lot easier, but unfortunately it's not.
Alright, so let me take that step further. So the 3.5 million is out of the, out of the discussion then. Where do you get your budget from today?
So currently, Edgefield receives their budget from us at the state, which is 15,000 that we allocate. They also receive $1,000 from Edgefield County as support as well. And I believe they get about $500 in affiliate support. So their budget roughly is $16,500 roughly. Is what they're receiving year to year consistently to man that office, which really for the demand that's in Edgefield County, that's very low in terms of trying to serve those customers at the end of the day.
And one last question I have, over to any of the questions. Again, I'm just using the eight counties you gave us. That, so our funding is tiny, 300 according to this. But I look at other places like Greenwood, it's 15,000 county funding. And Lawrence is 5,750, that didn't sound like $50,000 to fund a position, so what are they doing?
They're in the same boat you are right now in terms of demand, cause we are seeing demand shoot up for the opportunities to implement conservation on private lands. So they are going to county councils as well, asking for more money as well. I believe Greenwood actually received an increase this year to 30,000. So it's something that they are also trying to build on as well. Lawrence is approaching their county council this year as well for an increase in funding. Where that 50,000 comes from is just time of basis of paying an employee as well as maybe some additional operating costs for the district, whether it be to buy a PC for that employee to assist in running documents or assisting those landowners. That's where the basis of that 50,000 comes from. Of course, any support is greatly appreciated. But that would really make a difference in this county to have that available.
Other questions, Mr. Cooper?
So the $16,000 budget that you mentioned, that doesn't count Ms. Jones's compensation?
No, Ms. Jones works directly for the Natural Resource Conservation Service. So right now, she's actually detailing another county. There's no one manning that office right now, is what I'm.
She's detailing another county?
Yes, yes sir, because she works directly for the federal government in terms of allocating those dollars. So it's a unique partnership. So the Soil and Water District usually has a full-time employee running the office while NRCS, the federal partner, is also out assisting landowners with technical assistance as well as paperwork and getting cost share directly to landowners. And right now with Edgefield, they're just out with a part-time employee, so their time's limited in being there. So now NRCS is temporary out of an employee. These landowners have no one to go to to even get assistance, period, on a consistent basis. That's the bottleneck.
Ms. Jones, the part-time employee?
No, she's full-time.
She's full-time, but she's not investing any time in Edgefield County currently?
Not currently, no sir, unfortunately.
Does the part-time employee know you're here tonight? That was one of the questions I wanted to ask you this afternoon, I forgot. I'm just curious, in the 3.5 million, how many landowners are participating in that? Do you know, I mean, I haven't scanned all these, do you know how many landowners, approximately?
We need you to come up to the microphone, Mr. Dorn. So we can get it on recording, please.
As of 2019, it was 75 landowners.
75.
At a total of $3,504,000. Just kinda cut to the chase here if you don't mind. What we're asking for is the county is responsible for the staff of that office, the clerical staff. The state and the federal government is responsible for the district conservationist. We're talking two totally different things here. The district conservationist now has no support staff. She is responsible for answering the phone, doing all the paperwork, filling out all the applications, meeting with the farmers, and she can't do all that. I don't know if you remember many years ago, I'm gonna say 10, 12 years ago, we had Farm Service Agency in that building down there. They closed that office. Same things go happen with NRCS. I can just about bet you, if the county doesn't step up and say, "Look, we need this. The landowners need it, the farmers need it. We need to step up and do our part," that's all I'm asking.
I don't have any disagreement with what you're saying.
The 3.7 million dollars goes to project support, that's not paying salaries.
This is our first time looking into this, so that's why I'm asking basic questions. I'm not disagreeing with being understaffed and how stressful that can be.
I take some of the burden for that because I personally did not know that it was our responsibility in Edgefield County to provide this support staff. I never knew that. And we're gonna lose that office.
So who says that it's the county's responsibility?
So who says that it's the county's responsibility? I mean, who said that?
The federal government.
The federal government has said that we are responsible.
Right, am I correct on that?
Well, yes, in providing, excuse me, uh, yes, in terms of providing clerical and administrative support to get these dollars. And that is the in-kind trade-off, is that someone helps to man that office on a day-to-day basis. While, yes, they have a federal person there to allocate those dollars and to assist those landowners from a technical assistance perspective. But it prevents from issues like this happening long-term, where there may be a gap in a federal representative being in that office. Someone can help still maintain continuity throughout.
You know, I don't wanna put no damper on it, and if I do, I apologize for, can I have a little proof on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Can I get your contact?
You, you wanna send that to all of us?
Also, yeah.
Pudgers, we can all get it.
Also, you said that in two thousand and six, we were providing ten thousand dollars, and then in two thousand and eight. Do we have anything on that, Roger? Have we, can we find any documentation on that? Because I kinda like to know if we were doing that and why it stopped. I kinda like to know what happened there.
I know that in two thousand eleven's budget is when we first started to not fund most of the non-governmental units. Now, this is a governmental unit, uh, but again, there was like ten or fifteen entities that we were funding at that time that we stopped. When we stopped here, I, I have no idea. We could do some digging and, and try to find out.
Yeah, if we could research that, I, I'd be interested to know that. I'd also be interested to know, how much does your full-time person make?
We would, so.
I mean, I, can you just give me a ballpark? Yeah, don't, don't.
So anywhere between, it, it really depends district to district in terms of support, but it can be anywhere between thirty thousand up to fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, so this is the person that's basically boots-on-the-ground, going out, doing everything, but we want to pay this, not knocking any secretaries, they do a lot. But I'm just saying, the person answering the phones and, and, and greeting the people, we're wanting to pay them possibly more than the boots-on-the-ground?
Well, but this is the unique side of this, is you may could find that best combination where there is someone that can help not only run that front desk, but can be dual-purpose, that can go out into the field and also assist as well. So the times that NRCS is vacant, that technical assistance is still being provided. So that gives you increased opportunity or a bigger gap to pull from, from a talent pool.
And we used to have a secretary, is that correct?
Full-time, yes.
And when did that secretary, when did we lose him?
Probably around two thousand six to two thousand eight.
Okay.
And that wasn't even full-time.
And that was part-time back then?
I, I have one additional question, and, and I don't discount what you said about being understaffed. I get it. Um, of the seventy-five landowners that are receiving a portion of this funds, do, do we have an idea of what percentage of them are producing food versus timber?
I can't answer that.
I'd be curious to know, just because I, I, from a personal perspective, in, in building a resi- resilient community, I think local food production is very important. And if we were to, um, consider funding secretarial staff to get more, uh, more of that being done in our county, it would be a good thing. Uh, but I want more data, actually.
Yeah, I think.
Well, I would like to add, I know it's a good thing for us to support it, but I see no way that we can support that by fifty thousand dollars. Now, we don't have quite enough, uh, evidence, you know, really to go on. And, uh, as I stand, I could, I prefer proceeding for information, and y'all bring us more detail on, uh, everything. And I think that'd be the proper way to take it.
Two more quick, or one more kinda quick question, if you don't mind. Um, I noticed we have the counties, but we always talk about our neighbors, Saluda McCormick, they're not on this list. Is there a reason why, or?
It was hard for me to even get those numbers.
So Saluda, Saluda County currently is funding at about forty-five thousand dollars approximately. Aiken County, I believe, provides approximately fifty thousand dollars as well, um, onto that too. But I can send you that information as well.
And McCormick, do we have any figures for McCormick?
McCormick is, I don't know off the top of my head, um, but I believe, let me get back to you on that. I'm not a hundred percent on that.
We throw a lot at you, so we expect y'all throw a lot back at us next time.
But I'm happy to share that information.
I, I just have one last question. Is there any model in the state that any counties have gone together instead of being separate?
You, are you talking about in terms of staffing, or?
Sharing staff?
No, because as, as each district conforms to county boundaries, two, two issues there that could happen with that. One, um, it would provide less to the landowners of Edgefield at the end of the day, or those respecting the landowners.
I can answer that. The Farm Service Agency, that's exactly what they did ten or twelve years ago. Now somebody down here in Meriwether, or Edge of North, uh, North Augusta, has got to drive to Saluda to submit an application or get any of their paperwork done. That's not fair.
But what I heard you say was the federal government can move a person out of Edgefield County to work in another county, but we can't do that?
Well, so that's what we are ultimately trying to prevent, is them from moving that person out of here.
So getting a staffed person that you're talking about would stop them from doing that and get that person back?
Well, what it, what it would do is allow the frequency of the landowners to come in and rece- still receive services to where the federal government isn't seeing as, "Well, we're not getting any impressions from Edgefield. We're not seeing anybody that's coming in here at all. Let's just merge the county." Whereas the reality is, they're, they're probably, yeah, number one and number two in the state in terms of customers coming in. So if you fall flat on six months, eight months, while they're trying to look at filling that position or potentially doing that. And there's a big use egg in terms of landowners being served. That's not necessarily accurate in terms of that number. It's just that they weren't coming in the door and getting accounted for at the end of the day. That's where the concern is.
Any other questions? Comments from council?
Have you all ever considered, you said that Mauro Jones is responsible for getting Edgefield County the three million? Have Mauro ever, ever considered writing a grant?
So all, all of NRCS's dollars being federal, so the, the Conservation District does apply for grants and try to receive grants. One of the challenges is match, at the end of the day. So when there's no match on the table at all, and that's what this would open up the door to, is maybe to help get more match to bring in to offset some of those costs as well. Um, there's nothing to begin with, uh, from the start there, unfortunately. So that, that's also the bottleneck here too.
I do have one more question. So I, I just wanna understand, we've, in terms of federal dollars, we're number one in the state. But the federal government has chosen not to staff us.
This is, we, right, right?
Makes no sense.
So, so but Mauro works for the, for the federal government, and she was the one doing this. And they took her somewhere else. So it's just, you're saying it's our responsibility, and it's never been explained to us, it's our responsibility.
Mauro's a federal employee, and they, um, have moved, they, they moved her. We're asking for somebody, the employee's gonna be employed by the Soil and Water, by the Soil and Water District, which is a local. It's not gonna be a federal employee. The county's gonna fund, the employee's gonna work for the county and sit in there.
And will report to you or to our administrator?
They can, we can set it up either way, where they report to the administrator, or they can report directly to the Soil and Water Board and develop an MOU. Either way, you can do it, there's multiple facets of how you can do it. And I'm happy to share a job description and how that could look as well, if that would be helpful. I'm happy to do that. But when I was saying earlier that we can't figure out why the NRCS is not being staffed. That's staffed on a conservation officer level, or a conservation tech, or a soil tech, like Mauro Jones. It's two different things we're talking about. So they're not choosing to bring us any technicians here, and all we have is her, and she's having to do her, her officer job and the administrative job.
That sounds like it's above us on the chain. And I wanna have y'all talk to people above us on the chain about this, because this is, some of this is out of our control. Have you talked to your federal and state representatives? Have they, have you knocked on their door?
I'm not understanding where all the confusion's coming from. You've got the Edgefield Soil and Water Conservation District, then you've got NRCS. They work in town.
Mm-hmm.
So Edgefield Soil and Water Conservation District is responsible for county funding, to provide secretarial staff or support staff for that office. So it really has nothing to do with the federal end of, it's the county's responsibility to staff that office.
Well, her being taken away from us has something to do at a federal level. I mean, so have y'all talked to, that's what I'm saying, yeah. That, no, no, that's my problem, is if she keeps getting taken away from us, that's not anything we have control over, obvious. Alright, so you're knocking on some doors there, and you're figuring out why we're, if we're the top, I'm thinking we should have the person here, so that makes absolutely no sense. Okay.
Everybody good? Okay, thank y'all. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Alright, council, next on the agenda is comments from the public. So since we've got so many people here, I need to kinda explain how this is gonna work. So if you're planning on speaking, I need you to listen very closely to what I'm gonna say. So we have two public comment periods. This is the first one. The second one comes at the end. The one at the end is for things not on the agenda. So if you wanna talk about something that's not on the agenda, you have to wait to the second one, no matter what you signed up for. You wait to the second one. The first public comment period is for items on the agenda. However, caveat here, there are two public hearings tonight. One is gonna be on the Kendall Mill, um, special tax assessment, and one is on the budget. If you wanna speak on either of those two things, don't speak during the public comment period, wait to the public hearing. So if you signed up to speak on either of those two issues, and I call on you, just tell me you wanna wait until the public hearing. Has everybody got that? Kinda clear? So in the first public comment period, we'd wanna hear from everything on the agenda with those two exceptions. And then you have more time to speak in the public hearing. We're doing you a favor, doing it that way. So that's the clerk, and she'll give me the, the first public comment period, and while she's bringing it, um, please understand that there's a thirty-minute time limit total for this section. And each person has a maximum of five minutes to speak. And the clerk will interrupt all of us and tell us when four minutes has passed, and she'll also interrupt us again when five minutes has passed, if you get that long. So with that, there's your warnings. So some of you didn't put down what you're gonna speak on, so I'll just have to ask you. So Judy Pandarvis is up first. Public, public hearing, okay, thank you. Oh yes, Summer Pandarves. Okay, so you're waiting for public hearing. Jessica Elkins? You wanna wait to the budget hearing then, yes? Um, and I'm sorry if I can't read your handwriting and mispronounce your name, so, uh, Fred, Fred, that's it? Public hearing, alright, thank you. Uh, John Pettigrew? This is not Kendall Mill?
I wanted to, Mr. Chairman and members of council, uh, at this point, I wanted to speak about the resolution, uh, not the ordinance, the resolution. It's the abatement resolution, which I think is separate from the public hearing, which is about the.
Actually, we'll take them both. Well, because people are confused, we'll take them both at that time, but go ahead.
But, uh, anyway, so, uh, I, I hope it's appropriate to speak about the resolution now, um, and I thank you for this opportunity. First of all, I wanna say, uh, there's been a lot of discussion about the, the Kendall Mill project and items related to it. And, uh, I'm not opposed to apartments at Kendall Mill, um, as long as the county doesn't give away too much future tax revenue to get it done. And that, that the town supports this, and their zoning allows for multifamily apartments, uh, in this location. Uh, and, and I've, I've looked at this, uh, abatement agreement that was sent out, uh, with the agenda yesterday. And, and after reading through that particular agreement, uh, I, I did have a few questions that I appreciate, uh, some clarification on. And, and first of all, um, this, uh, this property, uh, the zoning over there, uh, for the Kendall Mill property is D-one, according to the town. And, and does that allow for multifamily apartments in that D-one district?
Mr. Administrator, you wanna address that, because it's an Edgefield kinda question there, that district?
That'll be up to the, uh, town. That has nothing to do with county.
Right, but what I'm asking is, are, since we're talking about the mill in this particular location, uh, I, I looked at the town zoning, unless it's been changed, under D-one, uh, which that, uh, particular parcel of property is, it, it says no for multifamily apartments, but that could have been changed.
I believe the town is working on that.
The what now?
I believe the town is working on that.
Town is working on that, okay, okay, alright. Um, on the, uh, abatement agreement, uh, itself that was sent out yesterday, on page one, uh, under item two, uh, it states that upon completion of the project, the developer will rent all of the one, two, and three-bedroom units at market rate without subsidies or credits. And reading that, it, it doesn't say how many years that the developer will rent those apartments at market rate. Is, is that one year, five years, ten years, twenty years, or forever?
The agreement is written up that if they were going to be approved for the twenty-year assessment, they would have to keep them at market rate at least for the twenty years.
It, it doesn't say that, but, uh, uh, I, I hope that maybe that could be, uh, changed to say that. Um, now, um, where it mentions without subsidies or credits, would, would that include, um, section eight vouchers? Uh, because I don't think technically they are subsidy or credit. It's a, it's a rental voucher that the tenant would bring to a landlord. So, so would section eight vouchers be, uh, allowed or not allowed, uh, under that clause?
Again, these are market rate.
Right.
Whatever the market, a thousand, twelve hundred.
But section eight properties can be at market rate. The, the, the tenant gets a voucher, and then they shop for a place to live, uh, with that voucher, which comes through the South Carolina Housing Authority. And so, so my question is, would, would the section eight voucher be allowed for a market-rate apartment?
The way the developers explained it at the last meeting was if they could go ahead and get a voucher for twelve or fourteen hundred, uh, versus using that same voucher to get a five hundred dollar apartment, then they could not deny it.
Okay.
But a section eight typically will never be at a market-rate apartment.
I've seen them different rates depending on the household, the number in the household, and income and that sort of thing, but, but okay.
Four minutes.
Alright, um, it says you're not gonna allow the subsidies or credits, uh, why, why wouldn't you allow if the tenant needs a place to live that, that, uh, has a subsidy or credit? No answer. I'm just, I was just curious.
I lost his logic too.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I was using the logic here, John, so keep, continue, please.
Alright, alright. On page two, item four, it says the developer may sell the property after five years with county council consent in year six through eleven. And after year eleven, it appears council's assent, uh, consent is not required to sell it. And that the new owners can rent to tenants, uh, with subsidies and credits. Is that, is that correct? That's page two, item four, after, after eleven years.
Five minutes.
Without objection, council, you want me to continue on just a few more, because we've answered his questions. Any objections? We need another minute or so, John. Go ahead. What was that? I'm sorry?
Uh, is, 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 is that correct, that after a year eleven, council's consent is not required to sell it, uh, and the new owners can rent to anyone? After year eleven?
After year eleven, council's giving the additional ten years. So, and so council's not really getting involved from years eleven to twenty, in the details they've given the abatement for those ten years. Details they've given the abatement for those ten years.
They're giving the abatement for additional ten years, but they're not having any, uh, restrictions on the additional ten years, is that, is that right?
And the, the market rate would apply.
Alright, and final question, okay? Um, I ca- I calculated the total tax reduction estimated based on formula I got from our county auditor, uh, Bill Gilchrist, and I estimated that to be, uh, four-point-seven million abatement in the first ten years, four-point-four million in years eleven through twenty, for a total of about a nine-point-one million total abatement based on the figures that we were given, uh, of twenty-three million value and a one-point-five million, uh, initial value doubled after year ten. And is, is that the correct figures, uh, that y'all have?
After Mr. Gilchrist had given you, then I assume his numbers are correct.
He didn't, he didn't give me the specific figure, he gave me the formula for calculating the, 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 uh, the mileage and the, the, uh, total tax.
I, I have not looked at that.
Had figured that.
But I hadn't also figured into vehicle taxes and other taxes that would be receiving if this property gets developed.
Okay. Alright, thank you for those questions, uh, for the answers, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is Willie Bright. Where's Willie at? Willie Bright. Okay, thank you. Alright, that's everybody who signed up for the first public comment section. So, council, I will then close the first public comment section and move to the next item on the agenda, which is reports. Any questions or comments on the reports? Okay, hearing none? Consent agenda, is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to come off? Hearing none is a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
No movement, champ.
Mr. Chairman makes motions, there's a second. There's two per second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Alright, now we're up to our two public hearings. So, the first public hearing is on ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven-eighty, to revise special tax assessment allowing up to twenty years for investments over one million dollars. So, I think I'm gonna counsel, to help, I think, everybody here. I'm gonna ask the administrator if he'll give us sort of a, just a few-minute, uh, explanation, so we can, he can explain both the ordinance briefly and the resolution, which is pretty referred to as on the agenda, and these two things are, are linked together, if you will. So, but help so you'd understand what those two things are, so, Mr. Administrator?
The first item that's under the public hearing is the actual ordinance, which, under state law, we could extend the special tax assessment up to twenty years. When council approved this in twenty sixteen, um, Summer Pindarvis came to us and introduced what she talked about, re-known as the Bailey Bill. Uh, at that particular time, council looked at the ordinance and approved it just for residential housing. A few years later, uh, we then added on the opportunity for commercial properties to have that special tax assessment. But again, that was at ten years, and the state law will allow up to twenty years. Tonight before you, on this ordinance, all it's doing is extending it from ten years to twenty years. It has nothing to do with the Kendall Mill, it has nothing to do with any other property, whether it's in Johnston, whether it's in Trenton, whether it's in Edgefield, or somewhere out in the county area. There's no limitation as to what the investment would have to be, because again, in the state law, the amount of investment is not tied to the length of the special assessment. Should council approve this ordinance tonight, it just allows developers, uh, owners of property to come to you and ask, could they receive this special tax assessment? What we proposed at the last meeting, based on comments that we received from the public, we felt it was appropriate to have a developer's agreement, not only on this project, but any future project, that lays out the special conditions that council would like to see for any historic development. This is very similar to developer agreements you would have for, uh, having like a housing development or a commercial development. Uh, probably the most recent developer's agreement that we had concerned Heritage Place. When a number of citizens came forward and talked to, uh, Dr. Kenyon about Williams Road and the potential problems that, that, that development had, uh, with the neighbors within that area. What council did is they worked with the developer and made concessions of saying, uh, there's gonna be so much open space, uh, items concerning drainage, uh, not allowing an entrance onto Williams Road, not having commercial at one of the corners, uh, moving the emergency entrance to another location, adding a little bit more housing, and allowing a mixture of housing within that development. That's the essence of a developer's agreement. In this pure case, the resolution is the item that council is approving, an agreement with Durbin and Guru, uh, the developers that were here at the last meeting. Within that agreement, it lays out, uh, some of the items that were discussed at that meeting. Uh, the number of years that they would hold this property, the number of years that they would hold the property and not be able to transfer, and if they did transfer, it would need county council's approval. Uh, the fact, there was a discussion, is the market value one million or a million and a half that they're purchasing it at? Uh, I heard two different things, so, in the agreement, it says double the assessed value, but no less than three million dollars from year eleven to twenty. There is concern about the mixture of housing that would be within this development, and who possibly could be renting the, the housing. Uh, for that particular reason, we put that it had to be a market rate for them to receive the special assessment. Therefore, if anytime during the first twenty years, they decided not to have market rate, council could go ahead and rescind the special assessment. Uh, or if there was any other item within there that they did not follow through, uh, council, again, could rescind that special assessment. The next one that comes along, uh, and I hope there are others, for historic properties, for instance, let's just say the hotel that's been vacant for thirty-four years and is falling apart. That investment's not gonna be as high. In this pure case, the developer's agreement says you have to have a minimum ten-years investment. Council could decide ten years is all they're gonna give you a special assessment, or fifteen years, or it could be twenty years. There may be some other conditions that you would put on that development, beyond the historic aspects, which would be controlled by the state and the federal government. But each developer's agreement is gonna be a separate entity, and you look at it on a case-by-case basis. So, again, in this pure case, we place the elements and the conditions that we felt council had asked about at the last meeting, and that the citizens had discussed at the last meeting. So, again, two separate items that we have. The ordinance, which has something to do with Kendall Mill, and then we have the resolution and the developer's agreement that is specifically attached to Kendall Mill.
So, with that explanation, I just wanted to, to say that, you know, the, the resolution that comes up later under new business is, you know, obviously related, council, to this public hearing, so I'm not gonna call it by out of order for talking about both, because it's, again, they're, they're tied together, so I just wanna make sure we all understand that. So, with that, we will open the public hearing to, to the folks. What I'll do is, I'll just, if it's okay with you, I'll just start with the same list, and then once we get through it, then I'll open the floor up to anybody else who wants to speak on this topic, uh, in this public hearing. So, if you're here to speak on the special tax assessment, I'll go down this list. If you're not, tell me no, and you'll wait to the budget one. So, Judy Pindarvis. Okay? Summer Pindarvis.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm Summers Pindarvis. I am a lifetime resident of South here, or Edgefield, uh, outside of college, moved back here. Um, I am involved on the real estate side of the transaction with Kendall Mill. So, I just wanna go over a couple things that I think are important, that maybe weren't clarified well, or... Clarified well, the last one. Um, I did look up, the sales price is nine-hundred thousand. They are wanting to give the county a little extra money there on the appraised value or the assessed value at one-point-five. So, the county is getting more there on the current assessed value they will be taxed at, starting year one, more than what they're actually paying for it. So, more money for the county, yay, better than none, which is what we are currently getting. We're also currently getting no economic development from the property. We've had two other contracts fall through on this mill since the Turkey Federation took it over and decided they did not wanna develop the property. One person defaulted the day of closing, just decided they didn't see the project happening. The other group was from Charleston, they were an investment group. They paid a all-cash offer, close in thirty days if the current group did not perform. After coming and having their architects look at it, to simply hold the property, which was their plan, to hold the property vacant for ten years and then sell it to somebody in cybersecurity. They, instead of putting their money in the stock market, they were gonna put it in Kendall Mill. They were told it would cost them four-point-five million in the next two to three years to hold the property in maintenance and roofing. So, I think what Ken Durham said at the last meeting is very true, that somebody has to get in this building and use it and develop it, or else we're at risk of it being sold for parts, and then we are left with an empty ice war in town. So, they walked because the numbers didn't work to hold it for ten years. So, that would've been another ten years of getting a minimum tax rate. So, if you look at it like that, you're only asking for ten years past that, where if we keep it with the Turkey Federation, they sell it for parts, the Turkey Federation is gonna keep the land, and land taxes are low. So, again, you're getting no taxes. And I think it's a benefit for the community long-term. We may be not getting it immediately, and it's a gift, as Jake Smith said at the last meeting. It's not that we're gonna recoup all of the funds, but it's a gift for the community and an opportunity to develop and grow. You know, I have people come in and say, oh, your downtown's so beautiful, why are there so many empty spaces? Well, if we had another two-hundred residents in town, that were being a part of the community and living here, potentially, we could get more restaurants and shops and revamp our downtown. I also wanna make sure everybody understands that one percent of every transaction in town, or county, goes to school taxes. So, anybody that buys gas, groceries, anything of that nature, there is that one percent that's going towards school taxes. And typically, um, I asked them to give us this, cause again, it came up so frequently in the last meeting. In any of their other apartments that are one-to-three-bedroom apartment complexes, five percent or less, um, of those apartments actually have school-aged children. Typically, in those apartments, by the time somebody has school-aged children, they're moving out to a home, because they're small, they're not meant to house a whole family of children. So, there is a potential, I'm not saying that you're not gonna have zero at all, but there's potential, but it's a very minor potential for that. And yeah, that's all I've got. If anybody has any questions for me on those hard facts?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Jessica Elkins? Frederick Truesdale? Sure, you can speak to both.
I'm Frederick Truesdale, I live at twenty-five Dale Circle in North Augusta. When I read this about the Kendall Mill project, the first thing that caught my eye was the high-end law department. Who are these people that's gonna pay for high-end apartments in Edgefield? That's my question. I just feel like we're trying to reach people that are not in Edgefield County. The minimum income and earnings is not gonna pay for a high-end law department in Edgefield. I believe that the developers are the people that's going to benefit with these tax incentives that they're gonna get. At the end of the day, I just feel like that building, and Mrs. Pindarvis just said something about, um, the construction and how it's gonna be, how many dollars it takes to keep it up, or get it up to par. Sometimes we hold on to things just for sentimental value, when we should just let them go. That's what I want to say on that.
Thank you. Uh, going down the list, John Pettigrew? Okay, thank you. Willie Bright? You gonna pass on this one? Alright. So, I've gone through the list, so I'm just gonna say, if you wanna speak on this topic about the Kendall Mill special, and the, and the special tax assessment for twenty years here, um, please raise your hand, and I'll call on you. You can come up and introduce yourselves. Please, everybody introduce yourselves, if you would, for the minutes.
I'm Kathy Eckery, one-forty Sandy Springs, Trenton. Um, I just have one question. I heard Mr. Guru say at the end of last month's question period, that the state can require some of his development to be under Section 8. So, my question is, is the state going to have a higher power over county ordinances and controlling any of the development, and how this development is going to be used? Do we know?
I'll turn to my team over here.
I don't remember him saying that.
It was at the very end, because my first question at the beginning of that period was, are you building for Section 8? And both gentlemen emphatically denied that this was going to be high-dollar, not Section 8. But at the end, it was Mr. Guru sitting right there who said, well, the state sometimes requires them. I think Ms. Gilli might've been talking at that point.
What, 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 what he was stating, uh, cause I've read through some of the developer agreements that he had already signed with other locations. They want developments like this, if they're gonna put dollars into it, to have lower-income housing in those developments. And so, in some states, they do require it. In this state, they do not. But I mean, if, for instance, if our county or the town wanted to have an area for low-to-moderate income housing, they could require that as part of the developer's agreement. And that's what happened in some other locations that they were having.
It's that historical tax credit that I researched that's concerned. They say that the federal preservation tax is not the same thing that I was referring to. But then, we were talking about, or he was talking about, the historical state tax credits. And then the county's gonna come in and give tax credits. So, it's all to their advantage, it sounds, it's not, doesn't sound like a dedicated, long-term commitment. It sounds like we're just looking for somebody to bail us out. That's what it sounds like. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mayor Durham?
I'm Ken Durham, mayor. Um, I think Summers said it very well, a lot of what I was gonna say, so I won't, I won't say it again. I will say, I said last time that I am worried about it being sold for parts. Roof has outlived its lifespan. I do not have, as mayor now for sixteen years, I do not have my phone ringing off the hook for people wanting this project and this, this, this structure, okay? Let me just give this to you. I was in Joanna, South Carolina, they've got an old mill. I took pictures, and this is my biggest fear, I'll just let y'all pass it around.
Alright, thank you.
That it's going to be a leftover pile of brick, pile of timber, and a mosquito hole if someone doesn't come in, and I disagree about the market rate. We are trying to attract people from outside of the city limits in Edgefield to come in, to live, to invest in our town. That's what it's all about, is development, good development, structured development, and planned development. So, I urge you to move forward, so, thank you.
Anybody else? Judy Pindarvis?
I'm Judy Pindarvis. Um, I've been selling real estate in Edgefield for about, not quite forty years. And I see a huge demand for people who live and work in this, or who work in this community, who are schoolteachers... who are schoolteachers, they work at the prison, three hundred and fifty employees, they work at Genorak, they work at the hospital, and there is no place to really live, in an apartment. We've got five Section Eight housing projects here in town, last I checked. And when you look at the median income, it was, I helped them get some numbers together for their market study, which I'm not sure has been completed. But Genorak starts out at twenty dollars an hour, that equates to forty-one thousand a year, as they're starting. And across the board, the prison, the school, the hospital, all of those start in the thirty-five to thirty-seven thousand. So if you have two people who are earning close to eighty thousand a year, they could certainly afford a twelve-hundred-dollar-a-month apartment. They don't necessarily want to buy a home. You may all be aware of this, but the prison typically turns their guards over every eighteen months, so they're constantly coming and going. So I think that if you had the opportunity to have this and offer it, you would have people from Bridgestone, Genorak, all of these myriad of people that are here and employed to have a place to live. So, I think that there are, in fact, a lot of people that would want that, and it's not something that would not be successful. I hope we can fill it up in thirty days. Does anybody else have a question?
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak at this public hearing?
I'm Gabriel, Edgefield County. Last meeting I was at, listening to the gentleman developers talk about the project, they mentioned several times that their biggest deal breaker is this second tax break, for the second ten years, to make the deal work. If they're that close, to where they're operating on a shoestring, and that money makes the difference of making or breaking that project, and personally, I believe they bid off more than they can chew. It's not the project itself, I'm not opposed to that, I'm concerned about the developer and their ability to complete it without that. If they need that to complete it and to do the deal, they bid off more than they can chew, and that's, they just, I don't think they can handle it. There's too many things in redevelopment or rehabbing a building that size and the scope of work that is unforeseen. It's going to cost additional money, make changes, and if that's going to throw them off the tracks, we're going to be sitting there with a twenty-five percent done project or half-done project in these tax breaks. So, I don't, I don't think it needs to be the residents of Edgefield County paying to make this deal work for the developers. I've seen other developers getting refunds on projects that weren't completed. It's, I think, I think the council is pretty fast and free with our money in a lot of cases. And I'd like for you to take that into consideration in approving or disapproving, approving this additional tax break. I think you need to look a little deeper into this developer to make sure that you know what you're buying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could clarify, the tax breaks do not go into effect until the project has been completed and they get a CO. And the Edgefield Preservation needs to go ahead and inspect it and sign off on it. Max Shanks is over here, and that's the group that's listed in the ordinance as the group that reviews this before and afterwards. This becomes a little bit easier for Max and his group because this also has to follow all the federal and state historical standards, which are probably even greater than anything that we'd be looking at. But again, they are listed in the ordinance as the approving agency and the certification agency. But again, the tax breaks would not go into effect until it's certified.
Thank you.
Just a quick addition, I appreciate the comment. I appreciate that comment. But I want to reiterate that the developers themselves stated several times, the only way they can make this deal work is by getting those additional tax cuts. If they're cutting it that close, and they're not sure of their own financial capabilities to get this job done, they shouldn't be doing it. I'm not opposed to the project, I'm opposed to the additional ten-year tax. If that takes that to make the deal work, it's not going to be a deal.
Would any may else like to be heard in this public hearing?
Thank you, Ken, and I'll be brief. I did want to address a couple of points about the ordinance. And as I said before, I'm not opposed to this project, just like the previous speaker. But what we're talking about here tonight is whether we're going to take the current law, which allows for this ten-year abatement, and double it and make it a twenty-year abatement or tax break for the developers. And what that means, instead of ten years, it'd be twenty years where we would be getting very little tax revenue for our law enforcement, for EMS, for schools, and for other services, that the residents of these a hundred departments are going to demand. They are going to need services. And that's what our tax structure is designed to provide for, is the revenue for those residents. We hear demands tonight, we're being requests for more money for this and more money for that, that are worthwhile things. And, you know, ten years is a long time down the road, twenty years is an extremely long time down the road, and we don't know what's going to happen with our economy and what the needs of the county is going to be at that time. So I'm, would be cautious in extending it for more than the current ten years. I was unable to make the last council meeting, I was on a family vacation, but I have watched the video. And it appeared to me that some of the speakers at that last meeting were trying to inject fear into this decision, you know? I heard things like, "We're not going to get another chance again." Biggest fear is that if something's not done, we're going to have an eight-foot mosquito hole in the whole property. And this one, which I really took offense to, is that if something's not done, we'll continue to have a ghost town. I don't think Edgefield is a ghost town, not by any means. Yes, we'd like to have more businesses, we'd like to have more people. I'm in Edgefield every day, Monday through Friday during the daytime, and we are not a ghost town. There are a lot of small towns in South Carolina that are much closer to being a ghost town than us. And, you know, I compliment the businesses that we have here in town, that provide services, provide shopping, provide restaurants, they work hard, and they keep our town active. Yes, we can, we can do more, but for anybody who thinks that we might be a ghost town, I urge you to come to town, look around, shop, eat, and you'll see that that's just not the case. So, in summary, I just ask you again, leave the county ordinance like it is. This ten-year tax abatement for the developers, I've estimated it to be about four point seven million dollars for ten years. And combined with the state and federal historic credits and abandoned mill credits, that should be enough to get this apartment project done. And so, please carefully consider this when you vote. We're talking about a lot of money here, the sitting lollipops and bubble gum we're giving out at the Christmas parade. We're talking about millions of dollars in tax credits, and we're talking about the money of the taxpayers of this county, all over the county, from the north side to the south side, to the east and the west, and everywhere in between. So, I thank you for listening, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers for this public hearing? Sorry, go ahead, yes.
My name's Jake Garrison, I'm Edgefield District Five. I didn't, I missed last meeting, I apologize, but I don't like the fear aspect, I think we can still be positive about the area. Is there any way you could do a contingency on that, where you could revisit this in ten years and see how it's working? Is it some, does it have to be all or nothing? And he brought up a good point. Why is it so, why is that, oh God, we can't have this ten years, extra ten years? He brought up a good point about how much money you're making, or you're giving them in the first place. It should be a good deal for both of us. I just, you know, I don't know how I could be opposed to developing that particular thing, I'm not, I don't know anybody saying they're not. I just, it sounds like you need, we need to make sure we listen to some good points. And just see if you can do it, if you can't, I don't know. But I just think you, they brought some good points up tonight, and I just want to make sure I vocalize that, okay? Have a good night.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak at this public hearing? Going once, going twice. Okay. Counsel, I'm going to close this public hearing and move to Public Hearing Number Two, which is a public hearing on Ordinance Number Twenty-One, Twenty-Two, Seven-Eighty-One, and ordinance providing for the FY Twenty-Two, Twenty-Three General Operating Budget and establishing ancillary budgets for E-911 Administration, Economic Development, Solid Waste Disposal, Victims Bill of Rights, Emergency Medical Services, Road Maintenance, Tri-County Solicitor, Assistant Solicitor, School Resource Officer, One to Eight, Event Security, Sheriff Discretionary Funds, Clerk of Court Discretionary Funds, Pre-Trial Intervention, and Criminal Domestic Violence. So what I'll do is, I'm not going to go by this list anymore, we'll just, again, just like the last public hearing, I'll just ask you to raise your hand if you'd like to speak at this one, and I'll call on you, and you can come up and give us what you want to tell us. So, I'm looking for raised hands. Please.
Kathy Eckery, one forty Sandy Springs, Trenton. Just a couple of questions. On the fourteen million dollar proposed budget, is the school bond included in that money? How about the Law Enforcement Center? No. No. So those will be added on? And the itemized thing that's sometimes in the future, is that how it's going to work? When does that go into the tax?
So we do not include in our budget the school, the schools, okay? The Law Enforcement Center, the construction of it, is a standalone with revenue that we'll be getting in sometime, probably this summer, and then the expenditures that go with it. But that was part of the referendum that the residents approved a couple of years ago.
So sometime after this budget year, the next budget year, then those expenses will come on?
Well, the expenses would be the operation and maintenance expenses for the new center.
Right.
Not the actual expenditure, not capital expenditures.
Anybody else like to speak at this public hearing? Go right ahead. Come on up. Just a reminder, this public hearing's on the budget.
I just have a quick question about the budget. In this budget that we're referring to, is the county council included in this?
Yes.
I think it was mentioned last meeting about county council receiving an increase. And in my research, I've discovered that council has not received an increase since two thousand and three or two thousand and four. For the service that you do, I do think that an increase should be added to the budget for county council. That's what I wanted to say.
Anybody else for this public hearing? Okay. Yes, come on up.
Jessica Elkins, Forty-Seven Wyndham Drive. I had some concerns about the fifty percent pay increase for the budget. I have worked my entire adult life, and I've never received a fifty percent pay increase, and that really concerns me with the budget. I appreciate those who responded to my email as a concerned resident. I look for a response back from our council to kind of understand. I know we all have things to do and places to be, and I have to be here to understand what I'm missing oftentimes, so I appreciate the response that I get back in email. But I'm not opposed to a pay increase, but fifty percent, I think, is a little high for anyone.
Could she state her name again?
Jessica Elkins.
Jessica what?
Elkins.
Elkins, what district is it in? What district?
Am I still, am I five still? Five is, Scott, I'm two.
Two, I'm two now.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to speak at this public hearing? Going once, run it.
Rhonda Noyke, Twenty-Something Garrett Road. Hey, guys. I don't know if the people understand, this part of the budget can be the discussion about the Civic League as well. Anyway, at the April County Council meeting, the Civic League, the Edgefield Civic League, a nonprofit, came requesting a total of fifty thousand for their organization. Blank check for twenty-five thousand of taxpayer money was approved. I have a problem with the blank check. I need to know where those funds are going to, exactly. I think that would be within the audit, to know where those funds are going. Anyway, I understand the Civic League owns and maintains the Tompkins Library and the Lynch Annex. I understand that. I want to make sure everyone understands that the town gives the Civic League twenty thousand a year already. Dean, you mentioned that their yearly budget, you thought was like seventy-two thousand. That should be more than enough to upkeep those two buildings. What I heard last month at the meeting was a blurring, a blurring between the Welcome Center duties, the Genealogical Society duties, and the Civic League. What we all need to understand is, these are three totally separate nonprofit entities. The county council told me that the Civic League was a welcome center for Edgefield County. I visited the location to find out, the Civic League only owns the building. No one from the Civic League works in the building, no one from the Civic Link has any Welcome Center duties. I cannot find a list of Civic League Board members or a list of what they do or have done. Scott, you mentioned that last month that you visited the Genealogical Society, that was one of the first places you visited when you returned to Edgefield County. However, the Genealogical Society is not the entity that is asking for the money. I heard the Thompson and Thornton talk about Welcome Center and Genealogical Duties as well. These are separate entities. It seems that the lines have been blurred between these three entities to deliberately, in an attempt to get taxpayer dollars for the Civic League. In Edgefield, there are ninety-five, I printed them out, I should have too. There's ninety-five nonprofits listed for Edgefield County, from the American Legion to the Edgefield Cemetery Association, the Food Bank, Senior Citizen Council, Positive Rescue, Veterans of Foreign Wars. How do we give to one nonprofit taxpayer dollars and not give to them all? Are you really wanting to open that door so that they all come asking for taxpayer dollars? Thanks for listening, guys.
Any other speakers?
Evening, council. Thank you for your time. Perhaps I can soon serve you best by answering any questions you all might have. I did not realize that this was a section that was going to be addressed. My name is Justin Guy, I am the current director of the Tompkins Library and Welcome Center. I run along with a great group of people, the Old Edgefield District Genealogical Society, Ralph Scurry, Lysel Burton, Melissa Browder, Regina Fraser, and Tommy Guy, who runs the quill, and still sends it out to over four hundred people. Now, there's a lot of ambiguity between some of these associations. I'd be willing, I know you got a long letter, and I apologize for that length, describing a lot of the situations that are happening. I'd be willing to answer any questions you might have concerning the OEDGS, which has been occupying that building for forty years, running the Welcome Center, ensuring that the Civic League got twenty thousand dollars a year for running the Welcome Center. It is these It is these people here that answer the phones, that greet everybody that come through the doors, that give them packets, and give them brochures, and give them maps, send them around the town. It is this group of people here that actually does that. And the civic league does own the building, but beyond that, I'll say no more. But I will answer any questions that I can answer. Yes, sir.
I said one, the letter we received, nobody signed it, so were you the author?
I was one of the authors, yes.
Okay, how come no one chose to sign it?
We have various board members, and currently, there may be some threatening litigation from one side or the other.
But generally, when I send a letter, I sign it.
I'll be happy to say that I'm the major author on that letter.
That's all I wanted to know. Thanks.
I have a question. In this letter that we received, you stated that, I imagine I can call out the names because you wrote it, as possible. You stated that the civic league has not had a regular meeting with a quarter of its member in over six years.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I think I want, we were invited to where? Were we invited last month, a month, four last? Where did we go? Did we go to the welcome center, the library, or the civic league? Are they, I guess I'm as, are all three as one?
No, ma'am, they are three different organizations.
Three different organizations, okay.
They were all presided over until very recently by one man.
One man, okay. Recently, okay. There's one man. It's just the one man that asked us for twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars.
For twenty-five thousand dollars for owning the building, that is the extent of their, but. The OEDGS has subsidized, the directors pay for the last fifteen years. They're the ones that open it up, they close it up. I believe the civic league is responsible for getting a volunteer from ten o'clock to one-thirty on Saturdays. And we have tried to have several meetings with them, but we've been very, we've been unsuccessful. I understand that's a lot of information in that letter. Any other questions? I am at one of four square house square, if anybody has any other questions, I'm available anytime.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak at this public hearing? Yeah, you can go ahead, you can go ahead.
Chairman, thank you very much, and county council members, it's a pleasure to be here.
We need your name, please.
This is the first for me, my name is Ralph Scory. I was reared in Edgefield. I lived on Rem Street, and my family's been around Edgefield County for seven generations. Matter of fact, my great-grandfather built a house directly across the road. My grandfather moved in it because he didn't want to be a farmer. My grandf, great-grandfather ran the county farm here in the town. But as I came close to being a citizen, senior citizen, I decided I'd appoint to help Edgefield any way I could. I love Edgefield, I've come here every week probably for the last fifty years, twice a week. I live only about three miles from Councilman Topp. But, so I was trying to find something to do to help and be, contribute to the community that I love very much, and it turned out to be that I was invited to, well, first off, I happened to know one gentleman back there about two, three years prior to my volunteering with Genealogical Society, which I started with them. I had learned a lot about Edgefield history and got very involved in it. But I was invited by Dr. Conymick Neil, who was the, a new president of the Genealogical Society. He says, Ralph, why don't you come in and help us? And you've already helped us, I was volunteering for about a year or two. But twenty years ago, I agreed to become a board member of the Genealogical Society, first vice president, I'd never done such thing. I said, well, the duties, what do you want me to do? And they said, all you gotta do is come and help us out, volunteer, and see if you can get some good programs for us. We like to have a speaker every other month. So for twenty years, I've gotten to speakers every other month. I've gone to that library one to two days a week for twenty years. I've greeted people, I've worked hard, I've helped people. I've taken hundreds and hundreds of people around and helped them personally. Gone way out of the way. About ten years ago is when I discovered what the civic league was, I had no idea. I just knew the name, but I found out for sure they were the landlords of the building. And, but I, I didn't know anything about the civic league. Other than, I try to stay out of politics, I want to do what I can to help this community. But unfortunately, it seems that the Genealogical Society is, is in danger of losing its entirety here in this county. I can tell you, I do not, I don't think there's any other not-for-profit, five-oh-c-three, I think it's called, that does more for this county and this city than Edgefield. There are literally thousands of people in my twenty years, from out of town, from in town, that have come and to research their ancestors. And we have helped, and helped, and helped, and to my knowledge, other than, I think that Justin mentioned on Saturdays, from nine to one-thirty, the civic league has had a lady primarily to come and help, and, but I have been there on Saturdays also a lot recently. I've been asked to come and work for a particular individual many times in the last two years, but COVID knocked a loop in everybody. We never closed down, but we kept on working. And now, you know, it seems that we're about to lose everything that we've got, and it just kills me. I, I, I don't understand it, some of the things that I've read. I've sort of, I've never had to, to employ an attorney for anything other than buying property. And now I'm threatened with a potential lawsuit, and because I am an officer of this organization, we're having to retain a lawyer. It's incredible what's happening, and I don't understand it. And I don't want to cause a disruption, I love Edgefield, this town, this community has wonderful intentions, not only in natural resources, in the history, and the ability to help others. And I might add one thing, and I don't want to be called racist. But I guarantee you that fifty percent of the work that I have done and the people at the Genealogical Society since I've been there probably has been helping African-Americans do their research. We are blessed to have information that's not available probably nowhere in South Carolina, other than Charleston probably. And as far as the welcome center, we do all that work, and I can tell you, I bet you that less than five percent of the people that visit the Genealogical Center come there for the welcome center purposes. They are there to find out about families, or to find out about South Carolina, or to find out about history. We have a wonderful facility there that gives a lot about the history of the state, the history of the country, and, and now I understand they want to be removing the thing. I don't know, but anyway, it's unfortunate, I apologize. Thanks for the time.
All right, thank you. I saw a hand back here, I think, first, yes.
My name is Beth Thornton, and I'm the current president of the civic league. I apologize for us airing this dispute in front of the town council and in front of all the people who are here tonight to talk about things that are important to them. I, I think that this is important to the county as well. No one has ever disputed that the OEDGS, Old Edgefield District Genealogical Society, does wonderful work, they do a lot of work. We have appreciated having them in our building for, if it's forty years, I understand that. It's been said here tonight that the civic league does no work in this building. But, uh, first of all, there's a dispute over whether or not Mr. Guy is the director of the Tompkins Library. He is certainly the director of the, um, OEDGS is paying him to be a director. The civic league did not ask him to be the director. And it's in our policies and bylaws, or in our policies, that the civic league hires and pays the OED, uh, the director of the Tompkins Library. So when the person who was the director was doing this work for the community center, it was as our employee and not as an employee of the OEDGS. I have to say that she is on the board of the OEDGS. I know she loves the OEDGS, I always understood that she loved the civic league as well, but that may not be true. As to the charge that we don't have meetings, we have had lots of meetings. It turns out in the Cemetery Association and the civic league, a lot of the members of the board of directors are old, some are infirm, some are battling various diseases, and every, and some work hard at other things. Every member does not appear for every meeting. But there's a lot of discussion between the members. There are proxies given when we have votes, and there are telephone conversations to determine the will of the board. So if all of us are not in one place at one time, it does not mean that the board is not meeting and that we are not all very interested in what's going on. We don't have members in the civic league, so our only source of revenue is the money we get from the town for the welcome center and from the county, if we get money from the county. It used to be that we were on a line, a line item for the county to give us money, and that was dropped, I think it was two years ago. That's no longer true, and that was the reason we came to ask for money. It is true that there is a very bitter dispute going on between the OEDGS and civic league. Members of the OEDGS board have been very rude, very difficult to deal with. At meetings we have had yelling. The man who used to be the president of the three different boards, the civic league, the Cemetery Association, and the OEDGS, has resigned his presidency from the civic league because the, the things that were being said to him were so cruel and so disturbing that he felt that he couldn't, he couldn't deal with it anymore. He continues to be a member of the board. He was the OEDGS board, I imagine it was the entire board, wrote some sort of document accusing him of all sorts of things that were untrue or slightly skewed from the truth. Because of this, and then he was given five days whether or not he could, and within five days, he had to answer all of these things, and he had to withdraw as president of the OEDGS. For that reason, he got a lawyer. I don't know if there's a suit going on, we are not subject, the civic league is not subject to that. This has become a personal thing for this man and the OEDGS. And that will be, it'll run the way it runs.
I need to, I'm sorry, I need to interrupt you just one second, I apologize. So first, for everybody here, you know, the, the council did vote last time to give the civic league some money, and that is tangentially what this is related to. However, there's a lot going on between these organizations that have no bearing on this, on our decision. In the sense that, need to know, but it's y'all's organization, and you're not, you're not an arm of the county. So I'm gonna ask, let's, let's get away from those, and let's just talk about what we're, because I think everybody's had enough time to, to defend themselves, and, and so I would ask you, let's keep it at a different level and about the funding. This is a budget hearing.
I was getting to that, but thank you for bringing it back around. The civic league feels that the majority of the times of the director of the Tompkins Library was spending on the OEDGS and not a lot of time on the welcome center. There are a lot of things that we can go into with that, but you don't need to hear all of them here. We would like to expand the welcome center duties of the civic league and have more of a presence online, and try to encourage more participation from the, from the citizens, but also from tourists who come in. I can tell you, as someone who used to have a business here, that we need more tourists in town. We cannot support our businesses or our restaurants with no tourists. And I think that if we looked around and to see who was, who was keeping these things going, it would be a lot of the money spent is by tourists. So we'd like to have a better presence online. We have hired a new director who will work with the, with the town and with the county to do more, to encourage more business and, and more participation in the county. We asked for the money because we anticipated that the OEDGS would no longer be, uh, what we were anticipating was having the two separate organizations in separate areas in these two buildings so that we could work together a little bit less. It's not enjoyable to come to work and have people screaming at you, telling you that you've done nothing, calling you names, that sort of thing, and we don't want to put up with it anymore. So we're hoping to get some sort of separation there. And in that, the OEDGS has contributed a lot of the physical desks, computers, printers, that sort of thing, and we need to establish those things now. We feel like we're gonna be bringing in more to the county as we progress, and that was the reason that we were asking for this money.
Thank you. So at this point, I know that all of council, probably you need a break. We've been at this almost two hours. So we're gonna take a ten-minute break, so just a minute or two after eight, we will be back. So council, we're gonna take a brief recess, so be back in, in ten minutes, please. And then we'll resume the public hearing.
Oh, you caught me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I apologize, I didn't want to single you out, but because he had his dissertation plus a letter, I wanted to give you a chance to defend, but Tanya had raised her hand, she wanted to come up. So I thought, this could go on for a while and, 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 yeah, so I thought, ah, I better, I gave, I thought you made all the points you probably, for people here, needed to hear, but. Again, the first public comment period, everybody signed up. Public hearing, you don't sign up. I don't know, what do you want to speak on? Yeah, we need to do it during this public hearing, right? That's where it should be, right on. Can we get everybody to take your seats, please? Everybody take your seats, please?
We're at the end of the public hearing. Nope, we hadn't even done all business.
Okay, I was waiting on the clerk to give us this thumbs up that we're back on our broadcast. So everybody who's not here can hear it or watch it later. So with that, I apologize, but thank you for letting us have recess and I think you probably liked it too. So with that, we will resume the same public hearing we were just in, which is on the budget. So I think I saw a hand here next, this particular lady here.
Good evening, Council. Uh, my name is Tanya Guy. And, uh, first, I'm here representing, um, Charles Rill, the clerk of the court. Um, he is at a conference this, uh, week and so he asked me to come and read a letter for him. It says, "To Edgfield County Council, I have been a resident of Edgfield County for 48 years. Recently, the Edgfield County Council has opened the funding, flooding, funding floodgates like I've never seen before. It seems as if money is growing on trees and it's peak season. One county office receives up to 25% raises without a salary study. The rest were required to complete a salary study and received 5% to 9% raises, although the salary study said they were overpaid, which was ridiculous. Council votes to give themselves a 50% raise without a salary study, which takes them well over the salaries of Aitkin County Council. Being on Edgfield County Council is not meant to be a livable wage, it is public service. I read in the local paper that some council members were complaining about their own service. I have to drive 18 miles to town two to three times a week and this job keeps me away from my kids and grandkids and few people want to serve due to the abuse council receives. You knew these issues when you signed up to run for council. Many full-time county employees drive further, miss events and get cursed out by the public weekly, but that's, but that's only worth 5% to 9%. I am very disappointed in my county council. Again, this is public service, what's done is done, but please remember your oath and remember you signed up for this. Nonprofits have always asked for funding to assist in their operations. I have never heard any asking for full funding. If an organization can't operate on donations and state and federal grants, then they should not be in operation. The Edgfield Civic League has requested $50,000 from Edgfield County and already received $20,000 from the town of Edgfield. A representative told council at a previous meeting that the Civic League budget was $72,000. The Civic League presented a wish list of tables, chairs, desks, computers, microphone viewer, et cetera. Yet the Civic League presented a lease agreement to the OEDGS for $1,200 per month after asking council for budget line funding that would be given yearly. Why the need for funding if they are planning to be a landlord? The town of Trenton donated $250 recently to them. It was told to the Trenton Town Council that the Civic League owns the facility, but the old Edgfield Geological Society runs the Tompkins Library with non-paid volunteers. So why should the citizens of Edgfield County pay the salary of a nonprofit director position? Shouldn't any Edgfield County taxpayer funding go to the OEDGS who actually run the library? Also, the OEDGS owns 95% of the historical books and items in the Tompkins Library. They may need the funding for rent or to find another home. There are many nonprofit organizations in Edgfield County as told by our county council chairman. If you give to one, you better be ready to give to all. As county council members, I ask you to do your research before just throwing money away. This is not your money. Ask people around the Civic League, OEDGS issues before just making a decision based off one-sided information. This letter will be read at the next council meeting. Charles Rill, Edgfield County Registered Voter." Council, I would just like to speak as, as, um, on my own behalf. I was the director of the Tompkins Library for 23 years. It was a job that I dearly loved because of the volunteers you see sitting here and the ones who have passed on over the years. They are the, the life of the geological society. They were born in that building in 1985. The Civic League are just the owners of the buildings. And yes, the salary that I received, part of it was paid by the Civic League, $12,000. The rest was paid by the Geological Society. They pay for my, the rest of my salary. My duties at the Welcome Center were to do the tours of the town, to do the town's website and to do, um, speaking engagements, which I did. And when I did these things, the Geological Society were the ones greeting the visitors at the library and helping them with their research and doing all the other outreach. We do the Southern Studies Showcase, Southern Authors Expo. All the things that they told you about, Dr. King, you had a very good question. What did you see when you came in there? You saw two buildings that belonged to the Civic League, but everything you saw in there belongs to OEDGS. All the books, bookcases, tables, chairs. That Trinity Renaissance exhibit was paid for with a $20,000 grant from the state. Our basement project was paid for by the Geological Society through a $90,000 grant. The Geological Society is the one that has been funding all these things. What you saw was the fruit of our labor at the Geological Society, not the Civic League. All the things that George Thornton was telling you at the last meeting, that wasn't true. And I'm not calling him a liar, I'm just telling you that it was a falsehood. These things belong to the Geological Society. This was our work and they're trying to take credit for it. And they've been doing it for years and the Geological Society has stood by and allowed it to happen because we're not in it for accolades. We're in it because we love Edgfield County and the town of Edgfield. That's why I did it for so long. And the reason I left was because I couldn't put up with the way they were treating me. Beth Thornton saying that, that I love them? Tolerating. Anyway, that's all I got to say. Thank you so much for tolerating my comments.
Hand at the back there.
My name's Jake Harrison, 191 Sweetwater Creek Drive. I have a question on the, uh, if I was, if we wanted to promote Edgfield County, if I was a business or I wanted to promote my business and I wanted to hire someone to do it. And I wanted to give, they, I say, how much? And they say, oh, here's 20, we need $20,000. And I'd be, I'd hold them accountable. I want to know how they spent the money. I'd also want to know their track record. How could they lay out to me all specifics of what, how they've done this before? You know, in a sense, so if you want to promote Edgfield County, then maybe you should put the money in a, or start a promotion of someone that you could hold it, the money accountable to, is all I'm asking. And I understand the slippery slope, they say, when you give one, everybody else is gonna start coming and say, well, hey, you gave them money. Look, we've been doing this too. And I, so it's got, you get, that's a slippery slope. I'm not saying it's good or bad. Is there accountability for this and clear success or not? And if you want to promote Edgfield County and you have $20,000, $20,000, $50,000 just to do it, then create your own. You know, bring in somebody, bring them in and hold them accountable to what you're wanting to do. And that, that's why I'm kinda confused on why the Civic League got this money. I was here two months ago, but I, you know, I get it. It sounded good, but has it all been verified? Structurally verified what they do and how successful they are? All that kind of stuff is all I'm asking before we give them money. That's, as a businessman, I would want to do that if I hired you and you come tell me you're gonna do this. I want to see your, your record. I want to see it, not you tell me, I want to see what you've done and I want to see how I can hold you accountable for the money I'm gonna give you. And I'm not trying to be angry here, I'm just asking the question. So, thank you for your time.
Thought I saw a hand over here a minute ago.
I work at the Archives and I also work at the Genealogy and Welcome Center. I'm not here to throw shade, I'm here, yes, the library and the Welcome Center are together. However, I will say this. I've been there three years, no one ever from the Civic League has worked in that building. We work in that building. My other statement is that even though we are not the owners of the building, the OEDGS generates income for Edgfield. I have met so many wonderful people that come in for, to do research. If, even if the Civic League got the money, would they replace the computers that we are still desperately in need? If, even if the Civic League got the money, would they replace the computers that we are still desperately in need of? To help us continue the research that the researchers come in to do? Would that be part of what they're going to do with the money? I don't know, but I do know that the OEDGS serves the public in Edgefield, the community, the visitors. I just met a lady that came in from London. Now, who would have thought? I would have met someone from London that came in from the International Airport in Atlanta, and the first thing she said, "I had to come by here because I've heard about Edgefield." The OEDGS is not about us, it's about Edgefield. I've learned so much about the history of Edgefield. So many people from Hawaii, I'm in Alaska, everywhere come because once people leave, their kids, and they, they go to different places, different states. So, all I want to say is, I just want this organization to work for Edgefield. Because if you lose it, you will have lost a gemstone. You have so many people that are calling for, to, to, to do research. You have so many people that come in in the summertime to do research. You have people that are coming in now that are researching and writing books. I don't know Mrs. Thornton, I've never seen her a day in my life. But I just don't like the fact that people were staying here before you like that and deliberately mislead you.
That is Ranford, I live at May's Way, and I appreciate very much your opportunity to speak to you. I'm not here to promote one side or the other, I'm here to promote the Tompkins Library. The Tompkins Library is one of the most valuable institutions that we have in Edgefield. For many years, I have been actively involved in the history of Edgefield County and promoting our history, and I can tell you that the Tompkins Library is one whale of a resource. We are far better than almost any other city, county, or state in the United States in terms of servicing people who are looking for their ancestors, and we do a great job of it. Unfortunately, we've got a major division here between two organizations. The Edgefield Civic League on the one hand, and the Geological Society on the other. In about nineteen ninety-seven, I was asked to join the Board of the Edgefield Civic League because at that time, there was great tension between these two separate boards. And it almost was about to destroy the whole Tompkins Library. And in any event, I came in and I think had played a big role in trying to, in disseminating that. And in two thousand and four, I made a major effort to merge the two boards. Why do we have two boards? We've got one thing going here. In any event, that wasn't successful in two thousand and four. Frankly, neither organization, neither of my board members at the Civic League or the people on the other side at the, at the Genealogical Society, were very interested in that idea. But we have somehow managed to come along a long way now without having a whole lot of difficulties in the last few years until very recently. Unfortunately, there was a person who was in charge of both organizations and for reasons of lack of communication and, and lack of understanding of how to make things work, it, it just has blown up into a very unfortunate situation. And a lot of bad things have been said on both sides. We need to put that behind us and try to save one of the most important institutions we have in Edgefield County. There's been some thought that we need to have a greater attention for tourism in Edgefield County. Well, I served for nine years as the Chairman of the South Carolina National Heritage Carter, which, as you may know, stretches from Charleston Holloway to Pickens and O'Conne Counties. And in that process, we had lots of money that came through federal grants. So in that period, over ten million dollars came in, which we spent on trying to promote tourism in communities just like Edgefield County. And I'll tell you, it's tough to do it. It's tough to get the money, to, to, to bring people in. However, I, I think that if, to the extent that anybody thinks that by having a freshened-up Welcome Center, they're going to somehow bring lots of folks in and so forth. I don't see that. What I do see is that the Tompkins Library, over the time that I have known it, has been extraordinarily good in welcoming everybody that walked in the door, whether they were interested in genealogy or history or anything else. And it worked very, very well. And it's just very sad that we've come to a situation now where the Civic League has undertaken to hire a, a Director for the Library without any consultation whatsoever with the members of the Genealogical Society. And I think it's, it's absolutely crazy. I don't know where it's going to go, but I'm telling you, I have been agonizing tremendously over the last several weeks about what I have seen here, and I just hope that it comes together. I appreciate very much what you all do, and I am frankly sorry and disappointed that you're having to listen to all of this. But nevertheless, I do hope that you appreciate that this Tompkins Library and the Genealogical Library that we have is one of the finest institutions we have in Edgefield County that does a tremendous amount for all of us. Thank you so much.
I want to speak for, from personal experience in dealing with the library.
Can you please say your name?
Nathaniel Jackson. About four years ago, we had a family reunion. And my niece, who's an attorney at Clemson, came in to do research, family research. And I want to say to you that she said that that is one of the best she has seen. She did research also in Saluda, but she's, when she came to Edgefield, there was so much information found in archives there that she wrote a book of my family history from information that came from Edgefield. And that was four years ago. And if you want to see the book, I'm glad to share it with you.
My name is Max Shanks, appreciate you guys listening to me. What I want to do is try to give you a, a clear, a little bit of a clarification. I know it's confusing about who's doing what here with the Civic League and the Genealogical Society. I live here in Edgefield, I've been on the Civic League Board for nine years now. I'm also on the Cemetery Board, also with the Edgefield Preservation Association. I'm a member of the OEDGS, but I'm not on that Board, I'm just a paid member, so I do go to the meetings. So I try to get, keep up with what their concerns are in relation to the Civic League, things like that. The way this started out, years ago, when I first got involved, nine years ago, we had Civic League meetings. And we had Civic League and we had Cemetery Association in there because they were basically a mirror board of each other. We also had our Director for the Library that would come in and give a report. As the years went on, the same person became President of all three of these organizations. And then the meetings started becoming all grouped together. So we'd have a meeting that was the Cemetery Association, Civic League, and OEDGS all in one. And it all got jumbled up. And the bad thing that came out of all that was the Civic League kind of gave the perception that they were doing everything. Cemetery Association does all the work in the cemeteries, in conjunction with the Preservation Association. The Genealogical Society does Southern Studies Showcase, all the tours, the welcoming, everything else. I'm almost ashamed to say this, the Civic League, in the nine years I've been on there, maintains the building, and not a whole lot more. And they might claim they do more, but I've been there for nine years. So I can tell you, that's the way it goes. And I'm not saying that it wouldn't be great for the Civic League to have, to have somebody hired to run the Welcome Center. I'm sure we need that. But along those lines, this group right here is the group that has done all the work. And they're the ones that deserve all the credit. There are thousands of visitors that come to Edgefield, and thousands of dollars that come with them, and ninety-five percent at least, I'm not sure we've got solid numbers, I don't know what they are, but at least ninety-five percent are coming to the Genealogical Library. Not coming there because of the Welcome Center, unfortunately. We need more Welcome Center visitors, yes. But this is the group, and it's a very passionate group. They're very passionate about history, they're very passionate about genealogy, they want to share that. They've done all kinds of classes and tours and schools and all kinds of things. So, I'm not trying to bash the Civic League again because I've been on that Board, I'm still on that Board. I'm kind of caught in the middle because I've taken the time to try to listen to the OEDGS. When the Civic League claims they do these things, keep this one fact in mind. The Civic League has no members. It's only the Board. The Genealogical Society's got three hundred and something members, I don't know the exact number. Preservation Association's got forty or fifty, I don't remember that, but anyway. Again, I'm not, I'm not trying to say the Civic League doesn't need money because they do maintain those very important buildings downtown. But it's just, I think it's, it's clear, it's, it's important that you understand that these are still three completely separate organizations, and they do not report to the Civic League. Thanks, any questions?
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Go ahead. Louise, this settles?
Just let me say this, you know, I've taken in everything that was said. And really, I can speak on every subject that was talked about tonight. You know, at first, I was saying, you know, I had backup because I had Cousin Kemp here and I had Cousin Scully. But I'm not scared, so I'm still going to say what I got to say, okay? Now, I think I wrote down Glean's. But I don't just work hard for Glean's, I work hard for Edgefield County, period. And when you talk about the geology societies and all that, anytime there's a family reunion, I make sure I bring them here because their roots are here. And I make sure we plan things where they're going to need some money here. You follow me? And as far as books being written, yes, I'm in the books, okay? Because I'm the one that encouraged them. I invited them out to my place to introduce Edgefield. And when you start talking about salaries and working, when I moved back here, I hit the ground running. I started volunteer work, volunteering bills on wheels. And when I say volunteer, I don't care if it's the neighbor down the street or somebody across the town. If there's anything I can do for them, they know all they got to do is hit me up. And by the way, I used to think in terms of, when my mom, when I first moved back, my mom was so excited to have me to come to the picking at the Senior Citizen. And I said, I know she's smiling down on me now because not only we haven't been able to have those functions, but I'm on the Senior Citizen Board. And they said, "You all seem to think that you know Ms. Sells, but do you really know her? She's a mover and a shaker." And I did, because first of all, I said, the ones that they had taken to get those COVID shots, they don't need to just come up there and just look at each other and play cards or whatever. We're going to have to start doing things, taking them to the mall at least once a month. This way, they don't have to bother their loved ones or their neighbors, about pick up this for me and pick up that for me. This way, everybody's participating and everybody's doing what they got to do. Now, back to Glean's. Now, Dr. Patton, he passed a couple of months ago. He was our, he was the CEO when I first joined Glean's. But that was my baby. As a matter of fact, so much so, the family wouldn't even speak at this service. I said that to say, I said that to say this. Wherever I go, I have to be me. I can't be one person today and another person tomorrow. And I need other people that do that. There's lots of people reflecting back to the times when you weren't so nice. And those things stick with me. Now, like I said, I love Edgefield County. Because if I didn't love Edgefield County, I would have booked up out of here a long time ago. But I said, even going through changes with my siblings when I first came back, I said, you know what, Edgefield, Johnson, and Trenton, and you have to throw in Aitken and even Batesburg and Red Spring. It's big enough for all of us, as long as everybody stays in their lane. Because you're not going to run me from down here trying to do things that you've been here all your life and you haven't did and think I'm going to give it up. Oh, no, I'm a fighter, and I'm going to fight to the end. This seventy-eight-year-old woman, she got spunk, and she's going to use it. And when you start talking about volunteer work, maybe I'm misunderstanding a few points here. But you know, when you start talking about volunteering, I think some people are confused. Because to me, volunteering is if you need assistance to help you do your volunteer work. That's one thing. But to say you're going to sell a sum or a salary for your volunteer work, maybe I shouldn't have left from down here and went and found that other thing because that doesn't fit the category of volunteer work if you're getting paid for it. And by no means means, I have spoken to a couple of council members. I won't name names. And just like I didn't pull punches with them, I'm not pulling any now with the rest of you guys. When you start talking about from fifty percent, that's just like a race car driver going from zero to five hundred. That, that would be a medium somewhere in between. Because like I said, everybody is struggling these days. Everybody needs money to do whatever. And if you can tell these people that being offered five or ten percent increase, if you can tell them where they go, or where you guys go to get your food and most of all, your gasoline, sign them up. Otherwise, don't go for that. Let's not be greedy. I think, this is me now, and like I said, I ain't scared, I'm going to say what I got to say. You got my back, right, Austin? To me, and like I said, can't nobody give any more free time than I give. If someone called me two o'clock in the morning, "Ms. Sells, I need some help in my electric," I'm on the case. If I'm only right, whether I got gas in my car, that I had planned to use it for something else, I make that sacrifice and get up and do what I got to do. So all I'm asking for you guys that wanted this fifty percent increase, please sell somewhere in between. Don't try to reach any higher than twenty-five percent. Let's work together, okay? Good night.
Good evening, County Council, my name is Desdemona Pastadzki, you guys all know me by now. I'm also going to be talking about that proposed pay increase that we spoke, that you folks spoke of last week, uh, last month. I absolutely concur with this young lady that was just up here. I do not agree with a fifty percent pay raise. No one in this world gets a fifty percent pay raise. I'm disappointed in you, Mr. Cooper. You second that like that. You're on the way out, but you had to make your mark, thank you very much, it didn't help any. You, Mr. Talbert, stated you have been here eighteen years? Sir, that's fourteen years too many. It's time for term limits. You need to leave if you can't handle coming here two to three times a week. You, Ms. Kenyon, I used to respect you so much.
And I hope you still do.
Hmm, you took a ding last month.
Oh, but that's fine.
I know.
I still love you.
It's not a matter of love, it's a matter of...
I want you to know that, that I do.
Will you love me after I finish speaking? That's the big question.
I can promise you I will.
Okay.
You want to me, but I promise you I will to you.
I, I, I'm going to quote Ms. Butler. Can I quote Ms. Butler? "It's our job to love you, it's not our job to have you love us."
That's right.
Whatever, it's not about love. It's about the fact, you stated that you do not get to see your grandchildren or your children. My heart aches for you, I don't see my grandchildren, ever.
Really?
Ever. But that's nee, that's neither here nor there. You entered this field knowing what it entailed. You had no issue being elected for the position. Then you went so far as accusing Mr. Campbell of scheduling himself to go last for a power play. And also, you threw out a word that was harmful to each and everyone in here, and that was racism. You used the word racism on him. I didn't see it, he didn't see it, I don't think anyone else saw racism.
You only speak for yourself.
You're right.
Let me tell you, since you brought up that, on the typical email that all of you groups get together and send out, now, County Council probably won't speak because you all are in a group. But I got emails from you and the rest of the crew that y'all done downsized us because we are the only two. because we are the only two, if you wanna talk about racism, I wasn't gonna bring it up. Did I bring it up, Chairman? Did I bring up racism, Chairman?
I'm not here to debate this, go ahead.
Okay.
I'm actually not here to debate it either, I'm here to make my...
But you brought up racism.
You know, you did, ma'am, you did, you stated racism, go look at the minutes.
Look at it. You can't look at it, but I want you to understand that the group that keeps sending out these emails...
I do not know what group you're...
Who's sending it?
I'm not in it, I am not in a group any longer, I haven't been for almost a year.
Any longer?
No, I quit almost a year ago.
But you was in it?
If you're talking about the Mary, what a group, huh?
I don't know, it's some groups that, some of you all say, well, them two ignorant people need to come all down off the...
Nope, not me, wasn't...
Two and two.
Nope, go look at the, look at the...
You can look at it.
Time out, time out.
Time out, where are you?
You can look at it.
I'm, I'm, I suppose that you'd please settle down for a moment, your order. Let's go back to your comments, please, and let's not address council members individually, let's talk...
Fair enough, fair enough. However, I was shocked to hear the term racism thrown at Mr. Campbell, since I'm not gonna speak to you personally. It was not a racist issue when he stated he did not see the use or the need for a fifty percent pay raise. Nor do I, nor does anyone else that we know of, unless...
Speak for yourself, ma'am.
Again, we're not, we argue.
Speak for yourself.
Fair enough, fair enough. You could ask for a pay raise, I'm all for it. You should be compensated for your time, but not at fifty percent.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Fair enough?
Thank you. Well, just speak for yourself now.
Can you come up, please? I may ask you to please state your name at the microphone.
I love her. Come in for argument, just come and say a few words. Since the conversation got so far. I made it four years ago. I saw the record for Sachin Justin Murin Corbridge after eighteen years. I worked for him forty-seven years. Now, the problem I see y'all got tonight, you're gonna keep your salary up. I got a raise every year, and it's a damn. Then it wasn't hard for my boss, man, give me ten thousand. Caught so close to going to be already. But you can settle around that, so get too far behind, that would be the problem. You can get too far behind on the wagon, you can't catch up to save your life. But then you jump somewhere and do a big thing, then you get close to caught up. Now, all of y'all do that. Forty-seven years, I never, now you're getting raised. First of all, no. What y'all letting yourself do? I don't think y'all never got a raise.
It was a quarter of a century, a quarter of a century. And the reason is, it's a political issue. People don't wanna bring up controversial issues. If it wasn't tied to an election and it happened automatically, it wouldn't be an issue.
That's right.
So what you're saying, I'm just gonna say, I appreciate your comments.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you need to... If you're gonna stay in the race, you need to stay pretty close to get out.
And, and I will say one other thing, I was gonna wait until the debate of the budget.
I wish you would, because we're not supposed to debate speakers, but...
I'll wait.
You can have your say, but let's just hold it.
But I'll say it, that's all. And if, I don't care how old you are, how young, but you, you gonna fall there to be true. If you try to keep up, you ain't gonna get far behind.
That's true.
But if you don't try to keep up now, you'll get way back. And that's what, what y'all letting the council do?
Thank you. Thank you. All right, would anybody else like to speak at this public hearing on the budget?
I've done accounting work for, Nathaniel Jackson. I've done accounting work for fifty years. And I've seen organizations, council, city, county, school board and everybody, during a crisis, they have taken pay cuts in order to get through the crisis. And as Mr. Glover just stated, and I agree with him, you know, I understand that the council have not received an increase in a number of years. And I agree with this young man here, too. He said fifty percent is too much. Well, if you go back and prorate the years that you hadn't received anything, as Mr. Glover has just stated, if you're given a three, four, five percent every year, I guarantee you'll be over the fifty percent. So, you know, ladies and gentlemen, sure, when you signed up for the job, you knew it's, they say volunteer work. But volunteer don't cover your increase in living expenses and gas. If you do it every year or every two, three years, you'll be where you should be. And I think this council should really consider favoring in the increase that may be needed to cover the costs. If you do what you, uh, should do, you might have more interest in individual getting into the position. Cause I know a friend of whom, my friend, Mr. Bright, was chairman of the council. I know the trips, the meetings that he made. And all of his expenses, even though council reimbursed him on some expenses, was not enough to cover what he did. And I'm quite sure with all of you, the meetings you go to, the citizens that you talk with, hey, sure, you're a public servant, but by the same token, I think y'all be compensated for your expenses.
Thank you.
Jake Garrison again. I don't think, uh, I haven't heard anybody say y'all shouldn't get a raise. I think two months ago, y'all just kinda offhand said, oh, by the way, we haven't got a raise in twenty, twenty, since nineteen ninety-eight or something?
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine, it was something. So it's kind of offhand, I missed one month, and I find out, okay, now we went up to a fifty percent raise. I think it's just more to optics, I don't think anybody would really argue about a raise. You could've just, 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 you could imagine anybody who's ever got raises this year as three percent, maybe three to four percent. Nobody, I think of a little bit more communication and understanding, okay, it's been a long time. Should we, maybe the, the optics of it? Of the jump to fifty percent, you gotta realize the real, in real reality of world, that would shock anybody who just looked at it. And nobody's really faulting, should get some compensation. I think the optics, optics probably didn't get really looked at. And maybe that doesn't matter, but you know, there is a crisis that's going on. Whether you agree or not, just go, go to the gas station, go look at the grocery stores, go do everything. I have to drive all the way, what, thirty minutes to get here just to try to vocalize or try to be part of this process? I'm not expecting you or anybody else to compensate me for that. So I have no problem with the raise, I think that's almost stupid not to get, but now that's not, I mean, that's, I don't know, that's our fault right now. In the middle of a crisis, you would sit there and go, oh, well, let's get a raise, we haven't got one, so let's do it. I think it's a good idea to get a raise. Just either make sure everybody knows it's, the let, the time has been and how y'all came up with that. Um, if you did that, um, that's great. Maybe I missed it, but I think somebody missed it. I don't think a lot of people missed it.
Can I answer that? Thank you so much, but I want you to listen to this one minute. In the course of my research, what you was just answering about, I totally agree. When county council received a raise in Philadelphia Johnston, named Mr. Monroe Neese, asked his councilman, and I think Mr. Bright back there, and I think it was Mr. Bright and Mr. Talbert, Mr. Monroe Neese, nineteen ninety-nine, we dug it up. He estimated an increase for a fifty percent raise. The councilmen's all agreed. There was not one person in the audience that kicked against it. Now, we just got pointed out.
That's right.
Us three, me, I don't know what you paying attention, but...
Yeah.
Mr. Scott Evernatt. But listen, when Monroe Neese asked for it in nineteen ninety-nine, the archers had it. He asked for a fifty percent raise. Now, with the increase, I totally agree with you. Maybe just need to go out and let them understand nineteen to nine, nineteen ninety-nine to twenty, twenty-two. Mr. Roger Littledeuce. Am I right about this here? And I agree with you, and I want you to...
I'm not arguing, but you realize, you realize that what I'm asking, when I keep coming up here, is a logical thought process that's going on.
That's right.
Now, what was I telling you earlier about the accountability factor? I'm asking, I'm asking you to consistent pattern. Okay, I never, I never claimed I was the smartest person in the room here now, so you have to understand, you, it would, it'd be helpful, though, if you make things more logical, more explanatory to the stupidest person in the room. And then that way, all the other smart people back here may understand you can win them to your side. Is that's all I was trying to say, go ahead, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm not arguing about the raise. I'm talking about the optics and I'm talking about the, the times, and that's all I was asking.
I will just add, and I know it's public comments, but we, we have a cultural problem. It was said at least five times in our meeting last month, that it had taken a quarter of a century for us to have this discussion, at least five times. I don't think that was in the paper.
It wouldn't.
And I don't think it was in social media.
Y'all mentioned it offhand two months ago, I heard it in that meeting. And that's another reason not to have a meeting during Masters. Gone it, now who come up with that?
I'm agreeing with you.
That is absolutely insanity. That's, that doesn't look good, I'm gonna tell you, cause you know, you know during Masters, that's like Christmas Eve having a, having a meeting and then you come out and say, oh, we're gonna have a raise. I'm kinda half joking about the Masters, but you understand, it's hard to follow that. So go ahead, I apologize.
I'm just agreeing with you, the paper didn't report what was said five times, neither did social media.
That's right.
And it is an optics problem, and a lot of times, the optics is driven by a small minority of people.
But here, but here's the thing, you, you're, you're still, even, like I said, it's doing it at Masters Week. After, you know, I, if I was just sitting there going, y'all just happened to talk about it two months ago. I, I was here that one, and it's like, oh, yeah, you didn't know, y'all didn't even, man, it's been like forever. I thought ninety-eight, but it doesn't matter, ninety-nine, but I don't think y'all knew actually exactly that day. And then the next meeting, Masters Week, it comes back, I come back, oh, they're giving fifty percent raise. I'm like, what? They just didn't even know that. You know, so you see, that's the optics, and maybe you don't care what I think, but there's a lot of people probably do care, that, that a little bit more upset than I am gonna be, but it's not, it's just, I don't know, it's just a pattern here that I think is frustrating to someone like me. I don't quite see the pat, you know, how things fit together here. And that's, I keep listening to these people, they're a lot smarter than I, and they, they come up here with all this information, and I'm sitting there just telling you, I'm listening back there. And this is, and this has lasted six months or more. So I'm just, you know, that's just all I'll say.
Okay. I will not speak anymore, not, don't blame me.
All right. You got it. All right, anybody else need to speak at this public hearing? Any other takers? Okay, hearing none, council, I'm gonna close the public hearing for, uh, the budget ordinance and move on to old business. Under old business, number one, I've read this already during the, during the public hearing, ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven, eighty. So I'll ask the administrators if anything new or different we need to know about this particular ordinance.
The only difference is my memo, I did say that the investment needed to be one million dollars. That is not in the ordinance. After consulting with our attorney, uh, we just needed to say it's going to twenty years. And then any investment would be listed in a developer's agreement separately for any future historic building that's gonna be, uh, receiving this.
Go ahead.
There is a criteria in our ordinance as is as to, you know, benefits from having the debate minute. So we still be following those for best interest of citizens that you'll count, including the neighborhood, things like that. So everybody got that in our current ordinance.
But, so for clair, but for clarity, what we're about to approve or not tonight is literally a one sentence change. It has twenty, eleven, years eleven through twenty. That's all this ordinance does. For clarity for everybody. All right, council, questions or comments on this ordinance? Okay, hearing none, motion to approve, to give third reading, ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven, eighty.
Some, Mr. Chairman.
Make some motions, they're second.
Second.
Mr. Talbert's second, so any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Motion passes four to one, Dr. Kenyon voting against. Uh, on council item number two, uh, that particular item, uh, both those, uh, people, both Gloria Bynum and, um, uh, Mr. Williams, both had to leave, and they asked, could this be carried over to the June agenda? So I told them, yes, so without objection, we'll just move it to the June agenda, so you'll see that again. So we'll move to number three on the agenda, which is, again, I've already read this earlier in the public hearing. This is ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven, eighty-one, this is the budget ordinance. So I know we got a couple of items, A and B, to discuss and maybe even more, so I'll ask the administrator if he'd like to go through the changes we need to look at.
The changes that council voted on at the last meeting concerning the Civic League and concerning the salaries is in the current budget that you have in front of you. However, since the last meeting, we've had two different items that came up. One was the animal control shelter, that we currently have our animals transported to the Aiken County Shelter. They sent a letter to me about three or four weeks ago and said that, number one, they would like us to terminate our agreement with them as soon as possible. Hopefully by the end of the year, I told them that was not possible. Uh, but we would go ahead and start working on a new arrangement for animals, uh, somewhere in the county. And hopefully with, maybe us sharing with another county. However, they did state that in either case, the amount that they would be requesting from the county would be not a hundred thousand, which is currently in the budget, but a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So I'm recommending to council that we increase the animal control budget line item from a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five. You also heard a request earlier today from the National Resource Conservation Service for funding. So that was mentioned in my memo for your consideration. No other changes.
All right, council, in order to do any amendments, we need to go ahead and have a, a motion in a second, then we'll work on any amendments that you may or may not wanna make. So just first, is there a motion to give, um, second reading approval to ordinance numbers twenty-one, twenty-two, seven, eighty-one?
Some.
Second.
I think, I think, I think, I think Ms. Ireland made the motion, and I think Mr. Cooper's second. So we're open, uh, now for discussion. Let's just take these one at a time. So the animal shelter, the rec, uh, the recommended, uh, recommendation from the administrator is to increase that, uh, line item because we're being asked to, we're gonna be forced to by Aiken County. So to cover that, um, is there any discussion on that particular item?
I have a question, Roger, have we, have we explored, uh, Saluda County for the future, not, not with the budget, but just...
In twenty fifteen, when we were looking at building an animal shelter, um, that was during one of the times I was here, I went to Saluda County and they approved a memorandum of agreement to share facility with us. I did, I have not talked to them since that time. I wanted to get through this, uh, budget, especially second reading, and for you to publicly hear that we're looking at creating an animal shelter and trying to get some citizens involved with that process. So again, if there's any citizens, uh, that would like to walk alongside of us to create the shelter, would love to have that. And then sometime during the month of May, I'll be contacting them, um, to see if there's still any interest in coming. And then sometime during the month of May, I'll be contacting them, um, to see if there's still any interest in coming on board with us.
Follow, follow-up question, I may, if we were to approve this line item today, and we found out Saluda had space, we could partner with them and vacate Aiken sooner, if that was a possibility, potentially.
Correct. That, the hundred and twenty-five would be making the assumption that we are sheltering our animals there until June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. If we are able to design and build a shelter prior to that time, then that hundred and twenty-five would be reduced accordingly. And just so council knows, we've already come, developed this design, and we've asked, um, one of our planning commission members, Todd Brown, to give us an estimate. We believe, uh, the design we have is gonna be for somewhere between three and four hundred thousand dollars, uh, which is much less than what our last bids came in at. So we're moving forward as if we're gonna build that shelter, uh, but to bring all the parts together will mean meeting with Saluda County next month, or this month, month of May. And then I'd like to have someone purview this to see if this design is appropriate for Edgefield County.
Any other discussion on the, on, on increasing the amount to one twenty-five?
I have no problem with it.
And hearing none, uh, is there a motion to amend the budget to, uh, change the one hundred to one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the sheltering of our animals?
Same move.
Second.
So Ms. Ireland makes the motion, and Mr. Talbot seconds, any discussion on that amendment? Okay, hearing none, um, all those in favor of the amendment, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. So we're back to the main motion, and we'll move down to item B, uh, since it's there, and then we can talk about anything else you wanna talk about. So on the National Resource Conservation Services, is there anything we want to do with that tonight, or you just want to keep that as information right now and wait and see what comes in?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to receive it as information, and later on, Monday, bring back what we looking for, and then we'll make a final decision on it.
Any objection to that? Everybody good?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, uh, just a follow-up question of council. The only question that I heard that you wanted some further information on was from Councilwoman Ireland, asking, when did we stop funding them in the past? What other information would you like so you could make an informed decision?
Jackie, I thought Jackie had one also.
Gee. I'm sorry.
Yeah, she had one also.
What was the question you had?
About the conservation.
Okay. I am curious to know what percentage of the funding of seventy-five families is going to food production versus timber.
You did ask that.
It might be worth, Mr. Administrator, just going back and watching that part of the video, just to make sure we didn't pick up any, because we all had different questions at different times, and I'm not sure they answered all of them.
Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna let that one lie for a minute. So is there any other budget discussions you wanna have tonight?
So first of all, we've heard, um, a lot about the Civic League, we've heard a lot about the salaries. So let me just say, um, right off the bat, I, I, Dean and I, Chairman Campbell and I cannot make a motion to overturn either of those, because we were on the losing side of that vote last time. So if anybody chooses to make a motion to go either way to change their minds on that, would have to be someone else other than the two of us. Um, I don't think we're going to get any change of demands of the salary, so I'm not gonna bring that up, because I can't do anything to change that, and y'all are good with that, so I'm not gonna bring that up. I would like to talk about the Civic League. Um, obviously, we have some issues going on, um, we heard a lot tonight, um, maybe some we needed to hear, maybe some we didn't, I don't know. Um, I would like to say, my vote last month has, my position has not changed, it was not influenced on any of this stuff that we heard about tonight, because we just became privy to that after that vote. That started coming to light, so my vote last month had nothing to do with that. I'm still opposed to giving them twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, I would not be opposed to entertaining, should they come forward with a specific project that's outlined, such as painting the building, or as I mentioned before, doing the bathrooms. Give us that project, show us how it's bidded, cost analysis, something that we can go on, specific. I do not like the idea of putting them annually into our budget, including them in our budget. I think that's not a wise thing to do. Um, so again, I, I don't think I'm saying anything I didn't say before, um, I, I'm still not in favor of it. Um, like I said, there's a lot of nonprofits out there, um. All of them are probably as equally as worthy as this one to get twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, twenty-five thousand dollars is not gonna fix the problems we heard about tonight. Um, and one last thing, I, I wanted to note, um, last month, they came asking for twenty-five thousand dollars to hire a new director, and then we learned tonight that that director's been hired. Um, so I'm curious, I'm curious to kinda know where those funds came from, because they were asking us for that, but I guess that's another, um, sidebar there. But as far as it goes, I'm not changing my opinion on that. I still don't think we should fund them, but I can't make a motion to change that. That would have to come from someone else.
I, I would like to say, uh, Mr. Chairman, I have heard a lot here tonight, and I'm very disappointed by how you all two groups don't work together. If I was, want to come to Edgefield, to be in, go to my site, listen to what you all say here tonight, I'd be very disappointed. We gonna have to work together. I hear this all the time, I've, I've been selling meetings this week, and I'm not a piece of crap going on. So something need be done, with you all two groups. No, let me finish.
This is council time.
Yeah, y'all had your time.
You had your time, this is.
Y'all had your time, and it's about time. And when you all get together, I'm still having the same mind frame what I had in this week, but before the third reading, if something not put together, and some changes made, I will make a change with my vote. I sit here, and I listen, I just listen, people give up down the country, but I can't be rough around the corner. But I, I try to maintain my coolness. I try to, the character. That's saying I'm finished.
I would like to say, yeah, I'm more disappointed, and I'm disappointed, yes, I am, um, on a lot, Chairman, on a lot. Um, especially when things go on, that you think you're doing so honest and diligent, and it don't get said that way, you know, um. I've been up here since two thousand and eighteen. I tried my best to meet people that calls me, I do have a job. Sometime I even have to turn on the cell phone, just let you listen to me teach, I do. But when you put things out in a newspaper, and you don't do it right, that's when I have an issue. Put what we all say too, not your favorite. Yeah, I got pointed out today, yeah, I did, that's fine, I can live with it, I still love the young lady that came for, but don't hit the three, cause them your favorite, two left. I'm, they're gonna speed my, my mind, cause I, I probably, I know everybody listening. Mr. Cooper, there's so many things, and say that we best friends, we all. But Mr. Cooper was right, you put what you wanna put in the newspaper, and on Facebook. I got hit hard. Fifty phone calls and emails, not even in my district.
That's true.
I'm saying, well, I'm saying, not even in my district, I'm District Four, for the record. District Four Jack, Dr. Jackie King, not in my district, but I had fifty, if I had to count, fifty-five phone calls. Lord have mercy, not including the email, not even in my district, but we were beat down, that's fine, I can live with it, I can live with it. But to the Civic League, I'm gonna have to mean you tonight, and I'm gonna tell you why. I voted for the record that you all get a raise. Not a raise, let me bad back, cause that will go in, that won't go in the newspaper, let me bad back. I voted to give you all some money. It was motion in a second, somewhere down there for twenty-five thousand, I said twenty-five thousand dollars was too much. And I'm not gonna bite my tongue. But now I'm setting up, and I'm gonna tell you why, cause actually, I thought the two group was as one and was getting along. I really did, until we received the letter. But I did say, from the beginning, last time we met, not the whole twenty-five, but yes, let's help him out. But as of tonight, I wanna amend it, that what I said last month, I don't think the Civic League deserve any money. However, I need to word that, how do I amend that, Chairman?
So you wanna make an amendment?
I wanna make amendment.
Make motion to delete the funding of the Civic League.
I would like to make amendment that I do, we do not fund the Civic League, am I right?
Motion is to delete the funding of the Civic League from the budget.
Which is the twenty-five thousand we put in last time, but no other money anyway, right?
Right.
So that we just, you know, it just reverses what we did last time. So that's the, that's the amendment from Dr. Kenyon, is there a second?
Second.
All right. And a second by Ms. Ireland. Discussion on that amendment?
Mr. Chairman, um, I would propose that we, I, I like the amendment for thirty days. Um, I think in the last two weeks, both boards have elected new presidents, and, uh, they're in the process of reform, reformattying their boards. And I would like to see budgets from both of them, and board minute meetings for at least the last twelve months. Um, and if we could get those tomorrow, that would be great. But you don't need to get them to us for, for two weeks, and then we can reconsider. And then I'm gonna follow up with, you know, we've been talking, I think, we, I say we, I've only been here since twenty thirteen, but I've been watching for twenty years. We've been talking about this growth for twenty years. And it's here. And we're being watched, not by people in Edgefield County, but by people in Europe, by people in Asia, by people in Texas, by people in Wyoming. And what we saw tonight, if I was a rancher in Wyoming that was thinking about relocating, I'm just gonna be honest, I would change my mind and look elsewhere because of the drama. So, and I'm sorry if that hurts anyone's feelings, so I agree with what Jack is saying, but I think we do need to fund this organization, because it is incrementally important to what we are experiencing. It is the reason some people are coming here, and some people are choosing to invest here, and we need that investment, if we wanna see our buildings not deteriorate and fall down like they currently are. So that's, that's my little editorial, but I felt like that needed to be said. I hope that's okay.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes three to two, uh, Mr. Albert Talbot and Mr. Scott Cooper voting against. All right, so, um, any other budget discussions we need to have tonight? I'm sorry.
What was the vote?
Three to two.
I thought you voted for.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand, I saw, when I looked over, it was up.
I voted too.
I'm sorry, let me start over, let me start over, let me rewind the tape. We're through with the amendment, and no more discussion, all those in favor of the amendment, please signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous, thank you, I'm sorry. When I looked over here, I said, those against, I looked over here, you had your hands up, so that, that was my mistake, so thank you for the correction. All right, any other budget discussions we need to have tonight?
Yes. I got one more for you, please. First of all, I wanna point out, um, this is about the convenience site workers, um, I wanna note that Roger did a great job with meeting with all the departments, and, um, when they came to him, they asked for X amount, and he gave that to them. And Mr. Talbot probably was in on these meetings too, and, and y'all gave them what they asked for, but we know that since that time, they came back and they asked for ten cent more, um, for their workers, and these are our senior citizens working at the convenience sites. Um, so I would like to propose that we give them that ten cent more, especially if we're giving ourselves the raise, um, that we give them their ten cents more, I would like to see that included. Um, so that's, yeah, and so I'd like to make a motion to that end.
Commend the budget with that?
Yes, please.
Okay, that's the amendment, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Talbot seconds. Um, from a discussion standpoint, help me remember, it was, was it eight-ten or eight-twenty currently?
Eight-ten. They're currently at seven dollars and ninety-six cents, uh, they asked to be raised to eight-ten, which we have in the budget, with this amendment, they had to go to eight dollars and twenty cents.
Okay, so make sure we're all on the same page here with the money.
I don't know how much that equates to, probably somewhere between five and ten thousand dollars.
Because of what, thirty-one workers?
Uh, we added a couple of workers because of the sweets, Sweetwater Center, um, I just need to figure it out on paper. I don't wanna say exactly, and then I misquote it in the paper.
All right, there's, uh, any other discussion on that amendment? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, and motion passes unanimously. Any other budget discussions we need to have tonight? Okay, hearing none, council, um, is there, we already have a motion, uh, on the floor, and now it has been amended several times, so, um, I'll ask you if there's no more discussion. All those in favor of giving second reading to ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven eighty-one as amended, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. That takes us to new business, the first item we took care of at the front of the meeting. The, uh, second is to consider, uh, of approval authorizing the county administrator to provide a letter of support to the National Fire Safety Council, supporting the fire safety for the children of Edgefield County. So, Mr. Administrator, would you like to talk about that one?
The town of Edgefield for the past thirty years has recognized, uh, fire safety, they go to the elementary schools, and their fire chief has asked for a letter of support, uh, recognizing what they do within the community.
Questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there a motion to authorize administrator to write that letter?
So moving.
Mr. Talbot makes some motions, they're second. Mr. Cooper seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Number three under new business is consider of approval of resolution number twenty-one, twenty-two, eleven forty-eight. This is the Kendall Mill, um, redevelopment, uh, resolution, so I'll ask the administrator to please walk us through this one, please.
Just hold on for a second.
We've been put on pause.
Uh, no further comments other than what we had before.
Counsel, any questions or comments about this resolution?
I'd, I'd have, I'd like to make a couple of comments, if you don't mind. Shocker. Um, first of all, I, I thought, um, I wanted to point out that we are not paying to have this done. Um, I, I wanna thank, uh, Mr. Peter Groo for running the numbers that he ran for us, but I'd like to remem, remind people that those numbers are basically monopoly money. Um, it's not there, it's imaginary figures, it's imaginary numbers. We're getting zero dollars from this property right now, we will continue to get zero dollars in the future. It's owned by nonprofit, they don't have to pay, they don't have to upgrade it, why would they put money in it to upgrade it? It behooves them nothing to do that, so they're going to let it continue to fall apart, sell it off for parts, maybe. If that happens, then they're just gonna scrape it down, it's gonna be a perfect flat place, and guess what? All these people who are worried about low-income housing coming, what's perfect site then? There's your perfect site. I think it comes down to two things, we get $0, or we get some dollars. I'm on the side of getting some dollars. And so, yeah, that's pretty much all I wanted to say.
Any other comments, questions about this resolution? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve resolution number 21221148? And Mr. Cooper makes a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Talbert, second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes four to one, Dr. Kenyon voting against. All right, council, we are now up to number four, which is consideration of approval of first reading of ordinance providing a lease and agreement between Edgefield County and Edgefield Aviation, Inc. So, Mr. Administrator, if you'll take us through this one, please.
About 20 years ago, Linda and Johnny Anderson entered into an agreement with county council to operate the airport. At that time, there was just a lot of things that needed to get done, a lot of improvements that needed to be made, and I just really congratulate Johnny Anderson, who's sitting there in the back row, and Linda for what they did to bring us to where we are today. Johnny is, is still planning on working at the airport for hopefully a number of years still to go, but he would also like to get some help and to kind of start pushing this aside to a younger person to hopefully take us into the next several decades. So Tyler Flom is here tonight, he has asked that we go ahead and execute a new lease agreement at the airport. It is almost exactly word for word what they council approved a number of years ago. It'd be for 25 years. The reason it's for 25 years is so that when the new FBO operator wants to make improvements, they could go to a bank, and the bank would loan them the money based on the fact that they're gonna be operating this airport facility for at least 15, 20, 25 years. So he has a number of improvements that he would like to make, improving the hangers that are out there, possibly somewhere in the future, adding fuel, possibly adding maintenance facilities there for the aircraft, definitely making some improvements to the terminal. The only area that we are having still a discussion, that you have before you, is on the insurance. He knows he can get insurance, which currently, the current FBO has at $1 million. I'm hearing from most agencies that I work with that they are requiring a higher amount of insurance closer to $2 million. So it may, there may be some changes on the insurance and the value that you would have starting once this agreement's been approved, and that might incrementally go up over a period of time. We still need to work this out and, and get a little bit more information, but I wanted this to be introduced on first reading tonight, and hopefully by second reading, certainly by third reading, we'll have the insurance worked out for you. So we're recommending you approve the ordinance as given to you tonight for first reading. And again, Mr. Anderson's here, and the new FBO operator that's gonna be working with him is also here, if you have any questions of them.
Any questions or comments from council? Okay, this seems to have worked successfully in the past, so I'm glad to see it. So is there a motion to give first reading to this ordinance providing a lease and agreement between Edgefield County and the Edgefield Aviation?
Still moving, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cooper makes a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Talbert, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. All right, we're up to the second public comment period, same rules that I just said before, so I'll ask the clerk if she can give me the next list, please. Thank you. Okay, let's see, the first one would be Mona, and she is gone, so she's not here. Justin Guy is gone. Ralph Scurry? Gone. Lucille Burton? Tony Guy? George and Beth Thornton, do you still want to speak? Okay. Pailin Hatch? You need to come to the microphone then, please.
Sorry, I asked a lot of questions.
I just wanted to answer Tiffany's question, I'm Beth Thornton, and I'm president of the Civic League. You asked how we could hire a director when we haven't gotten this money. Until about 4 o'clock this afternoon, I was under the impression that the Carol Bryan was gonna be the president of the OEDGS, the new president. She called me this afternoon, told me that she was not gonna be the new president. I understood that we were gonna be able to solve a lot of the problems. It appears that those problems are gonna continue, but we did hire the, we did hire the new director, and we will find some way to pay for her.
Thank you.
All right, Pailin Hatch? She's gone? Max? Okay. Rhonda Nurecki? Louise Kemp-Suttles is already gone, I think she said her. So that is everybody who signed up for the second comment period, so thank y'all, we'll close that period then and move to the administrator's report.
You wore them out, including myself, so I'll keep this as short as I can. I already mentioned the animal shelter, but again, if there's anybody that would like to, I'll call them Friends the Animal Shelter to give me their name, and we'll contact them to start working with us. Radio communication, you all know that over the last several decades, we've had radio communication problems. We are meeting with all the fire chiefs, police chiefs, mayors, EMS, school district, Edgefield Water and Sewer Authority, sheriff, and there's probably one or two I'm missing. Here, next Tuesday night, to have our first meeting, oh, council member Talbert and council member Cooper are also gonna be representing the council. The whole idea is we're meeting with four different companies who will present what they feel is necessary to improve our system. Hopefully, from that meeting, we'll select one or two of them to do a thorough analysis, they'll come back, say 30 days later, to this group, make a presentation, and if we're satisfied, it'll be coming back to county council for approval. We need to go ahead and bring ourselves up to the 21st century in our communication. There's been too many calls that have been lost, people can't hear, can't communicate back and forth. This doesn't happen all the time, but it happens often enough that it's gonna eventually cause a problem. I don't know if we need, you know, there's a lot of conjecture what we need, and I don't want a conjecture on, hey, we need a tower here, we need a tower there, we need to do this differently, let the experts go ahead and look at it and come up with solutions. So I'm really excited about this, that we have an opportunity to make a major improvement there. So I appreciate your lovin' us to go forward with it. Broadband study, last fall, you authorized us to have a study done in conjunction with Aiken Electric Co-op to determine the broadband needs mainly in District Three and District Four. There's a band from Johnston across 19, coming up into Edgefield, there's 1,500 customers that are Dominion customers that have little or no broadband. We originally asked for $150,000, 50% on, or 50% of the study. Well, the study came in much less, we only had to spend $47,000 as our share, but the study will be used by us and Aiken Electric Co-op to apply for grants, there's $400 million minimum at the state level for broadband throughout the state. We feel with that study, we'll be able to have a very strong application with the state asking for $2, $3, $4 million. The remainder, then, Aiken Electric Co-op and us, we could figure out how we're gonna go ahead and pay for the rest of it. But we needed the study as the foundation for that grant application. So that's done, and so the next thing, and working with Gary Stukesbury, who was here last fall, is to apply to the state, and we'll be needing as many people as possible in that area to be calling their legislators to say, please fund this area. So again, that's the Dominion customers, about 1,500, but that's moving forward, and I'm real excited to see, as you all stated numerous times, the most important thing in Edgefield County is that everybody has the ability to have broadband at their home. So you're long, you're gone a long ways on that. Last thing I want to present is just a happy thing. At one of our Trenon council meetings, we heard someone state that there might be some free money out there to do some lighting in several of our buildings. We approached a company, they did the application for us, this allowed us to put in what we call LED lighting versus the fluorescent lighting that we have in most of the buildings. They have already completed every building here in the county, except for the courthouse, they're still working on it. We received $38,000 plus dollars, and that paid for all the lighting at the DSS, the agricultural building, the niece building, the courthouse, the sheriff building, magistrate's building, and I'm missing one of the buildings, but all the buildings were getting free lighting. I told Joe Simpson, our maintenance worker, you won't have to change a ball for the next 20 years, and he was really excited about that too, so we really have come a long way with that, and I'm really proud of our guys and our other workers that get involved in this on a day-to-day basis.
Any questions or comments for the administrator? Hearing none, we moved into the chairman's comments, I have one brief comment. I want to let you know that I attended the Alliance for Fort Gordon Board Meeting last month, I'm now on the advisory committee and a member of their communications committee. If you're wondering what this is doing sitting in front of you, I put it there. This is a brochure, that is something they put out widely to give people in all states an idea of what this area in South Carolina and Georgia offers. Our county is included in it, it's also available on their website, if you want to direct anybody to it. Fort Gordon's growth has been astounding over the last handful of years in particular. It continues to grow to house the country's classified cybersecurity work. I want to ensure Edgefield County is a part of that growth in a way that benefits citizens and businesses, so I just want to let you know, I'm gonna be an active participant in these meetings, and I'll communicate with you what I learn and what I can help influence. That's all I have tonight, there being no other business, that's all we're entertaining the motion to adjourn.
Still moving.
Second. Mr. Talbert makes a motion, Mr. Cooper's second.